Folks, how are you guys doing?
John Cosby up to sleep.
Yeah.
Yay, thank you.
Brought this to us just in case you get out of hand with your comments today.
Insurance just for me.
It's too hot to be here.
Yeah, exactly.
Is the one that upstairs seems to work.
A little warm tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Definitely would make it quick.
Fat chance.
What'd you call me, fat chance?
Fat something.
All I can say is I brought protection from Boki tonight.
Oh.
I thought it was fresh.
Comes in the package.
We wish to share. You know what I was just thinking?
Oh, I even had a gal birthday.
What is that thing?
When I turned that on before I was...
Bradley Lake and Washington, they have space and like... She's Willie's realm still come? She grew up there, didn't she? Okay, she must, she must be Jay's sister. There is still probably a football player. There is still relatives in here.
I don't want to mess up.
Yeah, her dad used to become a track driver, something like that. Well, there was a cousin or a nephew that ran Lakes a couple of years ago. He's done Isaac or something. Yeah, this was Jay and he would have been, say, he would have graduated in two thousand.
John Harroway.
At Melon.
I am good, Mary, who are you?
He was her best. My dear brother. He'd be thirty-six, something like that. Things not to do.
Did you have a good weekend out there?
I did.
All right. Call this Lake study session Lakewood City Council for Monday, May fourteenth to order. The first item for discussion is update from West Pierce Fire and Rescue. And we have Assistant Chief Sharp. And excuse me, Chief Sharp and Assistant Chief.
Alan McCurdy.
Kind of mind open.
There you go. Mayor Anderson.
Deputy Mayor Willen. Members. We will have a short presentation to give you this evening, just to talk about some of our, some of our major programs, not everything obviously, but a few of our major programs and some of the programs that we're changing and evolving. Let's see, there goes, okay. So you'll find as part of the material in front of you, we also brought a year-end report. We won't be going over that tonight, but I did bring a hard copy for you and for those in the audience, our annual report is, the full report is online at westpierce.org. On that note, just a little bit of a review in two thousand and seventeen, some of the, some of the accomplishments for the fire department. We ran just under sixteen thousand calls with about seventy-three percent of that is EMS and rescue-based calls for service. For the size of the department that we are and the population that we have, we're one of the most urbanized fire departments in Pierce County, one of the busiest per capita in Pierce County. So definitely you probably see our medic units and engines running a lot around, around the city. Our other programs that are very active in the district too are our education programs. Our prevention division went to two hundred and fifty-six elementary schools last year. They visit every classroom and every school throughout the school year with a different educational and safety focus for each grade level. And I'm sorry, I guess I should have introduced Hallie, our Assistant Chief Hallie McCurdy. I know most of you know Hallie, but Hallie's also in charge of our Fire Prevention Division and our Plans Division. So she's the expert in all things fire prevention from education to safety and code enforcement. So along the same lines, we also are in the high schools, teaching CPR to all the high school students. And another program that we're really proud of is our Community Emergency Response Teams, our CERT program. And that's a program that's, that's, we are able to facilitate that through a grant-funded position from AmeriCorps, and we have an AmeriCorps volunteer that helps us manage the entire program. And as an example, this year we have four to five classes that we'll be putting on with upwards of twenty-five students in each class. Those are already full for the entire year. And we have a current waitlist of over a hundred people that want to participate in our CERT programs. And throughout, throughout the fire district, we have about just under five hundred members that are part of our CERT team since we've started. This year's kind of a big year for us. We're going to have CERT class forty this year. So our fortieth CERT class will be this year over the last ten, ten years or so that we've had this program in place. The, the members are, about half of them are active members, still participate in all the training and come back to assist in community program events, but several of them are just active on a mailing list. So if there was something to happen, they're still able to be a part of that through an email system and the contact system. Last year they participated in over thirteen hundred volunteer hours in the community. Another program that we have that we came and talked to council about last year, we installed about seven hundred smoke detectors, smoke alarms, I'm sorry, in about two hundred homes last year. And as we presented to council several months ago, late last year, we have a grant-funded program for this year that we were just starting up. And it was a targeted program, not for homes specifically, but for high risk. We did some studies and found that high risk, it was in some of our commercial properties in multifamily homes, apartment complexes and such. So we started that program and most of the target programs, target area was primarily in the Springbrook and Woodbrook area and a few other areas within the Lakewood community. But a lot of the targeted areas were in Springbrook and Woodbrook where we have a lot of calls, a lot of high risk. So we were able to go in there and what they're doing is they're installing, they're bringing them up to the newer code, which is to have not only an alarm in the hallway or the main living area, but also one in each bedroom. So they're placing one in every bedroom, which most of these do not have one in the bedroom to wake them up if they're asleep. It's out in the hall or a lot of times near a kitchen or something. And so if it goes off near the kitchen, they disconnect it and now they have no alarms in, working in the apartments. So far that program has installed about five thousand smoke detectors in nineteen hundred units. Eight of those were for hearing impaired and so it's been, it's been a very, very busy time for our folks. They're out putting them up as many as sometimes they're putting up three hundred or more in one evening. Crews will go out and target an entire complex and do that. So, so about two thousand to go and really excited about that program. And we're hopeful to go back and look at the numbers again and see what benefit that has derived for us as far as trying to stop some of those, those fires in a more incipient stage before they have a chance to grow and cause problems to multiple units. With that, we received a total of about two million dollars in grant awards last year. Grant awards are a pretty active program for us and we're again seeking grant awards where we can. Last year we had awards for new firefighters, the smoke alarm program and some training as well and hazardous materials. One of the big programs that we started last year, a new program, is what we've called our Youth Academy. And this was something to try and get local youth more interested or more aware perhaps of the fire service and the possibilities of having a career in the fire service. So what we did last year is we partnered up with the Boys and Girls Club for one night a week, a six-week academy. And the students from the Boys and Girls Club, those wonderful youths right there that you see, would come in and they'd learn all kinds of skills for firing EMS work from basic firefighting, rescue work, EMS skills and all kinds of training for a six-week. And then they had a graduation ceremony in front of our Board of Fire Commissioners. And what was really impressive was not only their, what they'd learned in, in that arena, but also what they were able to learn, their organizational skills, the confidence they built in every one of these young women and men, their leadership and their discipline. They were a well-organized group and it was, it was amazing to see what they had accomplished in six weeks and whether or not they ever become firefighters, you know, leadership, confidence, those are skills that they carry with them into any career in the future. So we're pretty excited about that. And next year, we'll be doing it again this year with some modifications that we learned from last year. Instead of spreading it over six weeks, it's going to be a full weekend with full days, two days on a weekend and bring them through all the training in a couple of days. It was really difficult to try and get all the students every week through the summer for a six-week period. So pretty excited about that. And we've expanded it to include all of the local area high schools for student fourteen year and above are eligible to be a part of this program. Let's see, going on to the next slide. Another area that we focused on last year was our entry-level hiring for firefighters. What we found was over the years, we didn't really try to do this obviously, but what we had done is along the way, we had created a lot of roadblocks for an entry-level employee. Entry-level in my mind would be someone who could come in with little to no skills and be eligible to apply for the job. But what we had done, kind of following industry practices from a lot of other organizations, is we put up a lot of different barriers, many of them surrounding cost and time. Written tests, there was a fee for a written test. It was offered usually at one time, so if you had to work that day, you weren't going to be able to take the test. If you didn't have the funds for, to, to take that test, you know, the fifty dollars or whatever it costs for the, for the fee, you weren't going to be able to take that test. There's also a test for physical ability called the Candidate Physical Ability Test, CPAT, nationally recognized standard for firefighters. And we were requiring them to have their CPAT before they were eligible to come take the test. So again, more money, more time off to get the CPAT, they had to travel up to King County to one of the local testing areas up there to get the test. They had to take time off or have the ability to have the free time to drive up there, had to be accessible, had to pay for it. And it expires after so many months. And so you have to continue to retest and get that certification and keep it maintained. And then the last part was we had started to shift towards a requirement for emergency medical technician certification. It's a very common certification that a lot of people have, but it's not necessarily something that everyone has and certainly not someone looking for an entry-level position. It's very costly, it's put on through a community college. So they have to have the time and commitment and ability to attend community college on a regular basis, have the funds for that and then graduate before they would even be eligible to then walk through our door for what we were calling an entry-level exam. So a lot of time, a lot of money, and we decided that at every step, we were just really kind of putting challenges on people. And so we looked into the diversity that we were actually getting from that. And we looked at racial, ethnic and gender diversity to see how that looked. And what was interesting was the testing service that we asked them for their demographics and they said it was a national testing service. And they said, well, we get about thirty percent. And I thought, well, that sounds pretty good for, you know, diversity makeup if you're getting thirty percent minorities. And then we looked at it and realized it's a national number. So we said, can you drill that down to our area? We'd like to know what you get here. And we found out they were only getting three percent minorities coming out for the exams in their process. So we decided to scrap that. We formed a committee to look at it and they came back with a completely reevaluated process. And the goal was really, let's, you know, drop all these roadblocks, let's drop these barriers. We still want to hire the best, we want to hire the best of the best, but why are we limiting ourselves in the pool of people that are available for us to look at? Let's try and invite as many people as possible to come take this exam. So our recruitment and retention committee created a new testing process in which we hosted our own written exam. We put it on on multiple days at different times of the day. So if you worked on a particular day, you could make it to the test on a different day. So you could schedule on a day that was convenient for you. They had, I believe, four different testing times that were available, days, evenings, weekends. It was held out at PLU, so it was close to the bus line, it was accessible to someone with a vehicle or even someone that didn't have a vehicle and needed transportation through public transportation. We did not eliminate the CPAT. Firefighter, firefighting is a physical job, it's a demanding job and we need to know that we have candidates that will be able to accomplish the tasks when they go to recruit academy. But what we did, rather than requiring it upfront, we make it now a conditional hiring requirement. So after we've offered a job, they go through their medical, physical, they go through their psychological exam and they go through their CPAT and they have to accomplish all those to be hired. And then the last thing we did was we eliminated the EMT requirement and we extended our recruit academy by five weeks and we now teach our own EMT class in-house to all of our candidates. So all the candidates who come in, whether they have their EMT now or not, we go ahead and train them in that. And so what we were able to do is we, we had a great turnout, we had about a thousand people apply for the test. And we were able to get a, about a thirty percent minority recruitment out of that. So a lot of minorities were, were able to be a part of that exam. We had people that we hired, of the ten people we hired, we had some that had absolutely no firefighting experience, they did not have an EMT. One gentleman had just transitioned out of the military, didn't have the capability to have an EMT because it wouldn't have been time to actually go to school before the test happened. So I was able to transition right out of the military and right into a career with the fire service. So we're very happy with the results of that. We're still working on it though.
So the CPAT's a pass fail?
It is a pass fail. They can retake it. There is a methodology for retaking it and it's designed, it's nationally recognized and been validated to be job-specific tests that simulate and reenact the type of job functions you would have to do. So no five-mile runs, it's nothing like that.
No push-ups, sit-ups?
No, push-ups and sit-ups are not part of it. But climbing ladders and lifting heavy equipment above your head and lowering things to the ground and physical maneuvering like that. So we're very happy with that and we're going to continue with that and try to continue to provide as accessible hiring practices as we can for, for those in our local community and those with, with or without any firefighting skills.
Seems very, I don't want to say entrepreneurial, but it seems like it's breaking from the norm because you hear so many stories about how difficult it is to get through the testing phase for qualified young people, like you're setting one through.
Yeah, barriers.
Yes, yeah.
It was more about negotiating barriers and being the most qualified.
Yeah, yeah, it can be, it can be very difficult. And, and for a lot of people, they usually get into the fire service because they know someone in the fire service and so they can explain a lot of these barriers and explain to them how to navigate a very complicated process. And what we wanted to do is get away from that and allow someone who wanted to enter into the fire service, the ability to walk in. We, we held orientation sessions at our stations to go through that process of explaining what to expect, how the testing worked, what would hap, what it would, what it would be like once they got hired and what the expectations would be. So at every step of the process, we tried to make it accessible and understandable to someone whether they had firefighting experience or not. One of the other things that we've tried to improve upon is our footprint. And two thousand and sixteen, we have a very large fleet and we have zero hybrid vehicles. As of two thousand and sixteen, we got our first hybrid vehicle. We, we decided it was time to try and look at some different types of vehicles for our fleet. The worst vehicle in our fleet is our large ladder company, gets about two miles to the gallons, incredibly expensive vehicle to run and operate. So we're trying to work towards a, a better fleet that's, that's more energy efficient. And in two thousand and sixteen, we purchased our first vehicle, that Volt that you see there, it's a plug-in hybrid, so it runs fully electric until it runs out of power and then it's got a full gas engine and then runs just like a normal hybrid after that. Fully electric vehicles aren't really in the cards for us, we need to be able to operate if the power grid goes down. So this was a perfect opportunity for us to try something where we could generally stay electric ninety-nine percent of the time, but have the ability to default to fuel if that's what we had to do. I got to be the guinea pig and I drove this in the first year, we saved about five hundred gallons of gas I fueled at one time. And it reduced our operating cost by about ninety percent over the prior vehicle that I had been driving. So it was a significant reduction, not only in our, our increased fuel efficiency, but because it's electric, our staff vehicles come in regularly every six months and they get serviced for oil and all that. But oil is not something that you change on this vehicle for two years. So it took, you know, three shop visits out of the cycle of a two-year cycle for one vehicle. So it reduced also the workload in our shop significantly. So we've expanded that, we've got two more this year. We're expanding that program and we look to find some new vehicles in the future that are a little bit larger. We only have a few places where this works, we really need some larger vehicles to carry equipment for our folks that carry their equipment and also four-wheel drive for inclement weather so that we can still be active when it's snowing or icy. And so there are some new, new vehicles coming on the market and we're looking at those to try and expand that and continue to work in that direction. So where we are right now, we're continuing to move forward, we're trying to do a lot of planning right now. Coming, you know, with the recession, there really wasn't a lot of planning, future planning because it was such a difficult time for the fire service in most public agencies. I think I'm probably preaching to the choir here a little bit. We have recently completed our standards of cover, which is a very complex industry measurement for services and, and, and demand for services and kind of a gap analysis where our weaknesses are and where deficiencies are. We have that completed, we are almost finalized with our capital assets plan, which is a full study of all of our capital assets and what the long-range financial planning looks like for that. And then we've also got a medical programs operational plan that we're working as Labor Management Committee on, kind of all the changes that are going on in the medical field. Our call volume is rising drastically and it's rising for real low acuity stuff that's driven by poverty, homelessness, lack of availability of primary care physicians, mental health. So there's a lot of different challenges out there that we didn't have the same volume of those, you know, five, even five years ago, ten years ago, certainly not. So fire service is evolving and our medical programs are evolving with that. We're trying to develop new plans for how to tackle that increasing call volume in that specific target area. We have two assistant chiefs and a deputy chief that will be leaving, or both deputy chiefs and one assistant chief that will be leaving in early two thousand and nineteen. So we're doing a lot of planning around that as well. And so we're, we're developing our strategic plan with all of these component pieces kind of brought into the, the matrix and setting ourselves up for our future planning as we'll be out next year with our four-year levy coming to an end. We'll be coming out to the public in two thousand and nineteen looking to renew that four-year levy. We want to be able to present kind of a forward-thinking plan that shows exactly where we are today and where we see ourselves going over the next, what'll then be almost five years because we'll be putting it on the ballot about eight or nine months early. With that, that's a real quick summary of where we were last year, what we, some of the programs we were working on and where we are today. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Chief Sharp as well?
More comments. I appreciate the fact that you recognize the diversity as a, as a, working with the multicultural coalition. It's one of the things that I hear a lot about at the fire department is that there's no diversity. And the other thing is that, and I don't know if this is true, this is just what I'm hearing, that everyone is related some way or another that works in the fire department. So that is a roadblock and I'm sure that you, you hit on that when you said that you were, had a larger pool to pull from this time. So it's good.
Yeah, and I would agree with, with the assessments of what you've heard. I, I think the fire service has, has not been as proactive as it could be in, in, you know, trying to promote diversity and, and trying to make it accessible to a diverse population. And, and we're definitely working on that. It is true, there are a lot of family members, again, I, I equate a lot to the military, you know, military, you hear of military families, you know, people get into the military. Fire service is very much the same way and it's not that, not that jobs are handed out any easier to someone who's a family member, but one, they do understand how to kind of navigate the test and process better than someone just because they have someone they can turn to. But also, you know, family members tend to have the same work ethics, have the same, you know, you know, they're, they're, you know, usually if one person who has a family has a real strong, you know, good worth and work ethic, you'll find others in that family as well and they're drawn to the same service for the same reason. So yeah, the fire service generally across the country does become a bit of a family service, much like the military.
And I've heard a lot of that, so it seems as if you're addressing it, so that's a great thing. And I've heard a lot of that, so it seems as if you're addressing it, so that's a great thing. Thank you.
I'm looking here in your magazine. Can you talk a little bit about your response during the Amtrak derailment?
Yeah, I can actually. We, we were involved in that at, at many different levels. And the, as you know, early last year, many of us from the fire department, as well as the city of Lakewood, we're back in Amisburg, Maryland, and getting trained on disaster response and multi-jurisdictional disaster response. And very wisely apparently, we decided to do a train derailment. And so that's actually what we practiced for about a week was how to respond to train derailments from a multi-agency perspective. And so we did have a train derailment shortly after that in Stilicon that went very well. Unfortunately, there were no injuries. The one south of DuPont was much more dramatic, as you know, and much more significant. We initially did not get involved very heavily on the emergency response. What happened with, the decision that they made at that time, the southbound lanes were heavily congested. They weren't sure how easily apprehends from the north would be able to access it. So a lot of resources came from Thurston County initially. But we did have, we did have a medic unit and some of our, our other staff were down there on site. So we had a medic unit that transported a significant number of patients. And we also had some of our staff that were down there involved in some of the operational oversight on, on the site at the, at the event, as well as doing some of the hazmat mitigation at the event. And then we also sent down several members, Holly included, to be members of the Emergency Operations Center and running the emergency management team that was stood up for a couple, two, three days?
Two days for, for the incident management.
So they had an incident management team that essentially was running the, the whole breadth of the event for a couple of days. And we had several of our, our members that are trained to be a part of that type of a team. And so they were down there in that as well. So emergency medical response, hazardous materials response, some of the operational oversight, and then also the incident management team. So we were involved kind of at all the different levels of that event.
Well, and, and I just want to comment on some of the things you presented. I, I really do appreciate the, the good working relationship that West Pierce has with the state of Lakewood.
As do we.
Yeah, and, and I, and, and I, I just think some of the things that you touched on, the youth academy, which I think is a neat idea to kind of introduce people to, to something that they wouldn't know much about. And, and I, and it's always a big deal because we've had problems for years with pretty horrific fires where people have lost their lives. And so getting the grand and really stepping forward on the, on the smoke detector thing, I think is just a really positive thing for this community. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. West?
So looking at the training hours by category chief, it looks like EMS is an ever-growing portion of the annual time allocation? As a, as a guy who had elderly parents, parents, toward the end of my father's life, paramedics came several times and they were very much appreciated. Do you see a lot of that happening with regard to the adult family homes and the elderly folks that may have calls for service? Because as you know, we're kind of grappling with that issue in Oak Brook.
Yeah, we, we, we do. Obviously, you know, when people are in an adult family home, they usually need a fair amount of care. And they, they're usually quite often at latter stages of their life, which as, as you just pointed out, tends to escalate the need for that care. And so we do go to a lot of the, the care centers, both the small residential style and as well as the larger care facilities. Quite often, it is an increasing part of the business as the community ages. We also have a lot of people in single-family homes, a lot of elderly over the age of sixty-five that live by themselves nowadays. And so it's very difficult for them to manage their care a lot of times. And so we're seeing a lot more of that driving the need for EMS. So where we, where we struggle sometimes with some of the, the nursing homes is when they don't have them staff adequately and they're trying to use the fire department as a default to provide services.
Can I ask about that?
We are there absolutely to go treat patients that have a medical need and transport them if they have a medical need. But there are some expectations that, that they have to meet as far as taking care of the patient and, and daily needs and things like that. So there are times when we get called occasionally where we're kind of taking care of things that should be taken care of by the staff in that home. And so we, our, our folks in our EMS division do some outreach with them and work with them and try and, you know, get that resolved on a case-by-case basis when that comes around. But generally speaking, yeah, it is, is a big part of our business and EMS continues to grow. But it's that, it's that real low-acuity stuff, the, the stuff that's non-emergent. And, and so our whole focus with our EMS programs is how do we shift and adapt to the need? It's not going to go away. So how do we respond to help someone who doesn't really have an emergent condition right now and not sacrifice a resource that could be available for someone that does have an emergent resource at the same time in the district?
That's a great question, how you balance that.
Yeah, it's, it's a real balancing act, but it's something that, it's not just us either. This is a nationwide issue for the fire service. Nationally, the fire service over about a five-year period saw about a twenty percent increase in call volume. And it was all related to low-acuity medical care. And it's driven by, as I said, many, many factors.
So speaking of, put this in context, you've talked about the efficiencies with electric vehicles or hybrids. Do you see any movement toward smaller responsive vehicles for EMS? And I, I have an example driven by traffic, you know, in Hong Kong. Very robust fire service. The, the fire rigs are every bit as large and sophisticated as we have here. Obviously with their density, they, they are very concerned about fire. But with their traffic, the initial response by the EMTs is in a small van that can actually make it there quicker and it's more economical for the low-acuity things where they don't need transport. So is there any movement to American Fire Service or just inertia?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. The, there's, and I'll give you a couple of different answers on that. One is absolutely yes, we're looking at some smaller vehicles to handle a lot of that low-acuity stuff. And, and that is one of the recommendations that's in our, our medical services committee is, is, we've described it, called it a squad. And that's kind of the name we've given it. But some kind of a squad where it's a couple of people in, you know, an explorer or a pickup truck or something of that nature, but rather than, you know, the big fire engine rolling down the street. So yes, absolutely, we're looking at models where we can respond, smaller vehicles, more appropriate vehicles, right vehicle, right time, right place kind of concept is what we're looking for. But the other piece of that puzzle also that we're trying to work on is how do we divert the call from ever happening? I mean, that's, that's really the, the gold standard of keeping the large vehicles small, keeping every vehicle off the road. And so we have a lot of, of patients that call us repeatedly. They call us very frequently. And quite often, and, and, you know, I don't want to preach to the choir because I know you guys have really been on the forefront of dealing with mental health issues. But quite frankly, they, you know how it goes. They've, they've got some kind of care issue they need, whether it's medical, me- mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, poverty, whatever it is, there's, they have a need, but it's usually, generally it's not an emergency room. So we started a pilot program about a year and a half ago to work on trying to divert those patients. And so one of the employees in our EMS division works on when our medics see a certain patient multiple times for something that's not medically related, or at least not emergency room-related, they'll connect them, they'll go out, they'll do a patient contact, they'll get them connected. It's, we're doing this pilot program along with the Northwest Physicians Network. And so we've got them engaged in it. And what we found is when we are able to intervene, we can almost eliminate their nine-one-one calls completely. Once we get them connected to the right resource, it's, it's very complex. There's, there are hundreds of resources out there, but finding them and navigating them is very challenging for someone who's already got a problem. And it's not something our paramedics are, are well-versed in. You really have to be in that network to understand the network. And so that's where Northwest Physicians Network helps us network and, and navigate through that. And so that's our, that's our goal and that's one of the programs we're looking to expand. It's just been a pilot program and so that employee is only able to work on it, you know, a little bit at a time, you know, a couple of patients here and there. But we literally have hundreds of patients that are designated as people that would meet the criteria of, you know, that type of intervention. It's just a matter of the time and the commitment. We're looking to try and expand that with a full-time employee that can be dedicated to that, not a paramedic or an EMT because it's not medical care, it's someone, nursing community, mental health community, someone with that background and understands how to navigate and get people to the right care. That's, that's really the, the ultimate goal for us, is not to have to respond to any vehicle at all.
It would be interesting to kind of get a breakdown of that, how much of the EMS calls for service are elderly care repeat versus, you know, any of the other categories? It seems to me that the aging population results in a lot of calls, just from my own family experience.
Yeah, yeah, it definitely does. And, and as you pointed out, same with my father, you know, in the last stages of his life, the fire department was there locked. It was all appropriate. It's all appropriate. It's exactly what the fire department is there for.
You're talking about people who have fifty, hundred calls in years.
But yeah, what we're talking about is people that have a significant number of calls, but it's not, it's nothing we can help them with. It's not a medical problem. It's nothing that the emergency room can help them with. And so it gets very challenging and, you know, we understand that they need help and they need assistance and they need care, but it's not the fire department. And we just don't have the resources to help them navigate that. It's a very time-consuming process. And, you know, I applaud the, the council for supporting through the, through the Lake Police Department, their, their correspondent program, because I think it's a model program for that type of work, to try and help divert these, these people from ending up in the wrong place where they're going to get the wrong care.
Yeah. Mr. Reseder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I know a little about, a little over a year ago when we went back to Maryland and we went through the four-day exercise. And one of the things that came out of that was at one point we got to a place of where there's a question of whether to evacuate Western State's hospital. And we sort of got to the point of none of the forty people that we had brought there had an idea whether there was a plan or how that would work or, and what the challenges associated with that would be. There been any follow-up planning with DSHS and Western States about their participation in emergency management and having a plan if anything had to go beyond shelter in place?
I, I know that we are involved in planning with them. I don't know a lot of specifics on any of that. And I don't know if Holly would be able to fill some of that in because Chris Badger, who's a, a joint employee with the fire department in the city of Lakewood is our emergency management person and she works directly for Holly.
Yeah, and she has been working with, she works with Western State very often on different plans. And so I'm not exactly sure about the specifics of evacuation, but I know that they have emergency plans and I know that they exercise on them and they request our help to exercise with them. And, and we have done that as well. So I know they have plans, but I'm not sure specifically about their evacuation plan, but I can certainly follow up on that for you.
Then I guess my next question would be, given that there's only one of your stations that is on the east side of the rail line, is that anticipated to, to, to be a problem? Or has that precipitated any potential mutual aid agreements with fire districts further to the east?
Actually, we don't view it as a, as a concern specifically. We do have, as you said, mutual aid agreements. There is a, for fire districts in, in the city of Tacoma as well, so not just fire districts, but for all fire districts in, in Pierce County, there's a overarching mutual aid agreement that everyone has, has agreed to. And so we do have the ability to get resources from cities and, and fire districts that are adjoining to us. Or even further out, there's a plan as well for, as, as the event scales up to bring in resources from further out or even from other districts and zones within neighboring counties. So we don't view it as a concern or a problem. We think that if, if there was something that for some reason bifurcated the district, regardless of the reason, whether it was rail lines or it was a, a major event such as an earthquake, we would still be able to operate fairly seamlessly because mutual aid is something we use so commonly. We train together on a regular basis across jurisdictional boundaries, operating to the same, for the most part, all the same operational plans on the fire ground and emergency scene. So it's, it's pretty seamless for us.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for coming and bringing us up to speed.
Great, thank you, Ravens.
Always a pleasure. And thanks for taking such good care of our community.
Appreciate that. And we will follow up with you on what we find out about the evacuation plan for us, what the status is of that for us.
It'd be even more interesting if we were other side for us. They're welcome, fires. Add a couple more to the other board, sir. Engineering pavement standards update.
I'm just going to bring myself up a little bit. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I am joined this evening by Mr. Ott as well as Mr. Busish. We're here to present update on possible updates, or possible options, I should say, that the city could pursue to help preserve the integrity of paved streets within Lakewood. Research has shown that pavement, particularly newer pavement, is susceptible to accelerated rates of deterioration when roadwork such as utility cuts are performed. The city has invested substantial resources in the improvement of the city's transportation infrastructure over the course of the past few years. Currently, the city has an overall pavement condition index, which is also PCI score. And this is a system commonly used to grade the health of the surface of a roadway of seventy-eight, putting it within the ninetieth percentile among peer jurisdictions. Given the accelerated rates of deterioration attributed to utility cuts and the high importance the city places on improving and maintaining its transportation infrastructure, it is within the city's interest to ensure that unnecessary utility cuts are deterred and that fees for cuts are commensurate with potential damage, long-term damage incurred by said cuts. Currently, the city has a five-year moratorium for new or improved roadways. So these are reconstructions or overlays. Attachment C provides a copy of the roads currently under this moratorium and those roads start on page two of Attachment C. So this is all the roadwork performed after two thousand and thirteen, that is a reconstruction or an overlay. Doing some research on moratoriums here in Washington as well as outside of Washington, it appears that a five-year moratorium is the industry standard. So if you did want to make a cut during this moratorium period, because certainly there are times where utilities do need to cut into pavement that is under moratorium, there would be a pavement restoration fee or a complete overlay. And this is determined based on the size of the cut into the pavement. And this is all explained in Attachment B specifically on page twenty-five, which has a table that provides the threshold for the pavement fee or the overlay. The city looked into this and researched a couple of options. As I mentioned, option one, while atypical, the city could elect to extend this moratorium beyond five years. There are rare cases where this does occur, Chicago, Illinois, and Cupertino, California, being two of them that we were able to find in our research. It is noteworthy, however, that Cupertino has since changed their moratorium and they now are a five-year moratorium. As a variation of this theme, option two, the city could retain the five-year moratorium with the stipulation that a moratorium on a road would extend either indefinitely or for a predetermined period of time. For the purpose of this memo, we used an example of...
We're having trouble here with your page references because we have our sequentially numbered for the whole package.
So...
Eight, eighteen.
Gotcha, okay, so it's ten. Ten is the difference. So if you subtract ten from what I say, and I can subtract it from here on, but we are currently on page seventeen. So add ten, add ten, excuse me, correction, add ten.
Got it. We're at page seventeen of our pack.
Page seven. So as I was saying, as a variation of just extending the moratorium, we, the city could elect to retain the five-year moratorium with the stipulation that a moratorium on a road would extend indefinitely or for a predefined period of time. For the example, in this memo, we used ten years. So if the roadway maintained a predetermined PCI, so again, for this memo, we used a PCI score of ninety, eighty-eight, and eighty-five. If the roadway maintained a score at or above those rates, the moratorium would stay in effect. So if you look at graph two, which I believe is going to be on... the moratorium would stay in effect. So if you look at graph two, um, which I believe is gonna be on page sixteen, actually, of... Yeah, graph two shows the average PCI in Lakewood by age of projects. So these are all of the roadway projects, again, major reconstruction or overlays that occurred within Lakewood in the last twelve years. The blue line is the PCI of those road projects by year. The red line, red dashed line, is the ninety PCI, the green is eighty-eight, and the yellow represents eighty-five PCI. So looking at graph two, um, essentially, if a PCI threshold was made to ninety, most projects would be below ninety in five years, allowing utility companies the ability to make the cuts. So effectively, the moratorium would end. If the PCI was eighty-eight, most projects would remain under moratorium extending well beyond five years. And per our information, um, it looks around nine to ten years before it would fall under a PCI of eighty-eight. If the threshold was a PCI of eighty-five, many projects would remain under moratorium extending well beyond five years and even well beyond ten years. You'll notice that, um, the PCI doesn't really dip below eighty-five until after, uh, year twelve in the graph. So as another variation on this theme, additionally, the city could opt to extend, um, this model to include a prorated pavement restoration fee based on PCI. And the two options are option two A to all arterials and collectors regardless of age, or option B to all arterials and collections from five to ten years of age. Um, I'd like to turn the body's attention to page, I believe it's gonna be eighteen now. So, the graphs here break down this prorated model. So if you look at table D, um, this shows the prorated model with no age limitations. So essentially, if a road maintained a PCI above ninety, and let's say hypothetically was fifteen years old, a utility company that wanted to make a trench cut or perform any other roadwork within the right of way or on the road would pay the, uh, pavement restoration fee at a hundred percent of whatever it would have been in year one. This goes down as you get a lower PCI score, um, in increments. We used a rather large range here, 'cause this is just the initial analysis.
Okay, that's a good question.
Sure.
So, I, I understand the analysis. Anecdotally, I wonder what the experience is with regard to patching? Because, you know, these are patches effectively after someone's trenched. And it seems to me that patches are the ones that tend to be potholes a few years later, regardless of the sixteen bucks a foot or whatever it might take to do the patch. You know, I, how long, anecdotally, how long do these patch trenches really last to sustain the PCI where we really want it to be, which is north of eighty, right?
I'm gonna defer that question to Weston. That sounds a technical question.
Thank you, Shannon. So, so it's a little bit of a challenge on how long a, a patch would last. It would be a function of the thickness of the pavement. So for example, uh, if we did a, a thicker patch on Bridgeport Way, say up near Custer, Seventy-Fifth, north of Custer there.
Because that's newer pavement that's thicker.
Newer pavement, eight inches thick, that's gonna have a fair amount of meat to it. Um, one that comes to mind is, say, Hipkins, there was a water patch, but then again, the patch was thin. So then, you have this small amount of pavement that's getting worked really hard, yeah, versus a thicker, a little bit more mass to it. So, um, I can't give a definitive answer on, you know, kind of a time, but it would depend upon the circumstances.
Got it, okay.
So, backing up a minute to pavement one-on-one, I've always looked at these pavement ratings kind of globally, but in the graph here, it, it's, it's surprising to me that the degradation between year two and year twelve is virtually nothing, and then it goes off the cliff. Uh, or, or takes a, a, a more, a more stated trajectory, trajectory down. What's the reason for that?
So, that ta- uh, graph two is a small sample set. That's part of the reason. Typically, it looks, there's a, there is a figure in here of a traditional, um, it's graph one, page thirteen of your packet. That's more of your traditional. You can see it looks somewhat similar, it's just a little bit different in year one and two. But that's a, that's a pretty typical, uh, curve for, uh, pavement degradation. And you can see by year ten, you're roughly about ninety, which is very similar to our, our data.
And so I guess to follow on to Mr. Whalen's question, yeah, would, has this gra- graph changed significantly if there are patches at year five and six? Does it, does it downward trajectory then start at an earlier point?
Yeah, so the system counts a patch as, um, it would be a negative, it would be a deduct. And it's simply because you have a coherent material, now you have four cracks in it, and, and that's really the reason. In addition, it also defers to, as the observation was made by Councilman Whalen, that, you know, that patch is not gonna last as long as the material around it. So, the software, um, builds that into its curve.
And it looks like that. Patches don't look great.
No, and they don't ride well, they're rough. And really, the user, the, the person driving our roads, it's, it's the ride. If there's a crack or not a crack, they don't notice that, but how smooth is the pavement? And you can never get a perfect, perfect patch.
Right.
They did a whole day run.
So I'd say lengthen the moratorium.
It's ki- it's kind of interesting to me, though, and, and that, that is, the one thing you can count on is no matter how long ago we actually paved the road, people will assume that they, we had just paved it.
That's a hundred percent correct.
And, and, um, so you, you guys did that road well, there's a five-year moratorium, so clearly it was longer than five years. But they, they, they really do have very short memories or very long memories, whatever. So it's interesting to me that nobody else has gone beyond five years. Is there, is there some kind of thing with the utilities where they feel that that, you know, they start pushing back after, if, if it gets out too far, they feel like it's unfair, or they threaten litigation, or, you know, what's the...
Yeah, there, there is a bit of a balance between the utilities and, and the city, and, you know, if they have to pay a higher fee, they're gonna pass it on to their consumers, and, and that's you and I. Um, so, a- as it shows, five years is pretty consistent. However, uh, I believe it was back in January of seventeen when we first started looking at this, um, we were looking primarily at our arterials, because we put such a tremendous amount of money into our arterials over the last ten years here in Lakewood. And, and there are your really expensive pavements, um, to, to put money back into. And so that would be another option, too. You could also look at, do you want just the principal arterials, or do you want all roads in general? That's another way to cut it, and I know Shannon has some of that in here, so.
Do we know that anybody does this graduated method, or whatever you call it?
To my knowledge, I haven't found any other municipalities that do this.
I think it's very creative what Shannon came up with, because it is really performance-based. If your pavement's at a ninety-five, I mean, that's a great pavement. So therefore, you cut it, it's gonna degrade it even if it's ten years old. But if it's seventy-five, and I know those couple of sections, it's a small sample in that one graph, um, well, you know, five years is the appropriate time.
So, some of the, a lot of the residential streets that haven't been touched for-
Right.
-a decade or more, they're gonna, they're, we're gonna let them cut, clearly, if they wanna start. And, and then they just have to repair whatever they had before. They don't have to pay more.
Correct, to the, the standard repair section in our city standards.
Okay. Otherwise, if it was good street, it wouldn't, I guess, I'm a little confused as to the difference. So it's a lousy road, we all agree it's a lousy road, they're gonna do the half cover, or the half lane, right? But now you're saying, if I wanted to go down the arterial at year six, what do I have to do? How is that different?
I think, Shannon, and you may wanna jump in, there's a range of different options that are presented this evening, and one option would be, um, at year six, if it was a, like in table D, um, at a ninety-two, then you would be treated the same as, as at year four. Um, but if you were at, say, a seventy-five, uh, like in the one example in the graph, then you would, you would, uh, pay a thirty percent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, the half street you're talking about, like a giant overlay? And that would be a cut that had to meet a certain threshold as, um, designated currently in the engineering pavement standards, um, standards manual, which you can find, I believe, again, on page twenty-six, it lists what that size is. So if this was just a, a utility cut, say, you know, a sixteen by two or so, it would not meet that threshold to do the full, um, lane overlay. So in this case, if that cut had a PCI on that road of eighty-five, um, per example on table D, they would pay seventy percent of whatever the restoration penalty fee was.
A restoration penalty.
Right, so these are the fees paid for sections where they don't do a full overlay. So for smaller cuts.
Okay, so this isn't like when the gas company a few years ago was redoing a number of mains and going up and down streets and-
I, I believe, and again- Yeah.
And the water guys, where they, they do some residential streets, too. So they go into the manual, because they're taking up the whole. They're going in and, this is one of the, we're gonna cut a sewer intake or whatever, it was most respected.
Right, I believe, uh, thirty-one year feet is the length. And again, that's at page fifty of the packet.
Go ahead.
So, other options that we've considered is taking a review of the fee associated with the restoration pavement cuts. Um, to my knowledge, this hasn't really been looked at for a while, so that would be option three. And then option four would require the increased use of trenchless technologies where possible. This is obviously the more expensive, um, option for the utilities, and that's why utilities don't commonly do this. So, city personnel recommend that further analysis on option two, A and B. And respective of these options, implement a prorated pavement cut based on the PCI score. Also, um, further research into option three, which is just reviewing the initial pavement cuts. If these recommendations are palatable to the council, city personnel will perform further research on option two and return to the council at a study session later this summer.
Mr. Resiter, question?
Um, in, in, in looking at the options, I, um, I wasn't quite clear, first of all, that we've opted on a lot of the local access roads, that our strategy is chip sealing. That chip sealing doesn't seem to get us to any sort of significant level. I mean, what sort of pavement index do we get to with chip sealing? We don't get to ninety, we don't, uh, get, get there. We just, like, get it back to year five. And so when we talk about local access roads that have been chip sealed, that's, uh, that there's, that someone wants to cut either because they're building a new house on a, 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 on a new lot, that's, or that's something that's been platted, or they're a utility, or being able to go and do that. That how is that impacted by either of the scenarios in there, where we've, just last year, invested in getting that road up, but we didn't, we never intended to get it back up to the ninety, whatever it is? And they just didn't sort of see that accounted for, because one of the, while pavement index is important in this, the fact that the city invested money in that road this year is, uh, you know, also a significant factor that I didn't, in that particular situation, I don't see in either of the, you know, options.
So in that particular option, and I know Weston can probably speak to this a little bit better than I, the PCI would be significantly lower, because there are, there is surface damage done to that road. With option two B, um, depending on how much damage there was done to that road, um, there would still be potentially a, a chance to recover some funds with the restoration pavement fee based on the PCI.
A couple other nuances, uh, a chip seal is a surface treatment. So typically, on our local access roads that may be thirty or more years old, um, the hot mix they put back was, would be structurally stronger. So currently, that's not addressed in the, uh, uh, in the standards manual. And then you had also asked about the software, how it treats the PCI. It does bring that PCI up to a, I can't quote the number, I'd have to check on that, but it doesn't take it to one hundred, as far as I understand.
Chip seal.
Wouldn't you chip seal, because as Shannon mentioned, your distresses are there. Really, you just paint it over them, and you keep the moisture out of your roadbed.
Quick question on the P. Should remind me, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go, go ahead, and I'll come back to my other question.
Sixteen fifty. Is there a mechanism in the proposed, oh, we haven't seen a proposed ordinance yet. Would there be a mechanism to increase that over time to accommodate for general price increases? 'Cause sixteen fifty, foot seems pretty cheap.
Absolutely, that's something we'd wanna look at with option three, and sixteen fifty hasn't been a set price over time either, which is the average of the past five years.
Okay.
So, the, the, the philosophy behind this topic, um, in that, in that, uh, you invest in a road, you, you sort of want it to s- not be disturbed in a way that's going to inc- inc- increase the likelihood of it degrading faster. So regardless of which option we choose, you know, this is not a topic, or a goal, or a strategy that is addressed in our comprehensive plan as a, as a, as a city. So whichever we choose, I think we should, we should also frame it around in s- making a, a, a comprehensive plan amendment that establishes a goal that's consistent with what we decide that we, that we, that we wanna do, as a, as a way to, 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 to move forward. None of the proposals seem to, also then, referring back to the comprehensive plan, you know, our, our plan is that we wanted to classify all of our streets in one of four classifications, up from major arterials down to local access roads and to, to, to categories of minor arterials. Is there any reason or rationale to tier some of the standards in your proposals to the type of road? In other words, cutting Silicon Boulevard as opposed to cutting Hundred and Fourth Street, you know, seems that there is, uh, a, a greater need to be able to go through and deal with, once we do a lot of work on Silicon Boulevard, or we've done on Bridgeport and not have it done, than, uh, Hundred and Fourth Street, or, uh, one of those other streets, and when we get to veterans and, and things like that. And that further than whatever we decide to do, further emphasizes the need to, that I haven't been hearing in a lot of the discussions about some of the projects that we have under, underway, with the exception being of the South Tacoma Way, Silicon Boulevard project, of there being significant cowork being done by us and utility companies. Almost never hear about it being done with the Pierce County Sore People. Do hear some of it being coordinated and done with the, the Water District. Not so much with the Puget Sound Energy folks, but is there a some way that we can incentivize coordinating with us inside this policy, uh, when you go back and study it a little bit more, that might get us to, you know, s- some greater alignment of that, that, that actually saves the city money in doing the initial project, if we can look ahead to do that. You know, sometimes we feel, well, people are on different timelines, and so we, we mention it to each other, but we didn't actually do it, or sometimes we did, because it lined up. But if we could incentivize that- But if we could incentivize that, the public funds being spent by all those entities could be used more efficiently.
It's absolutely something that can be looked into moving forward.
Yes.
I'd like to incentivize cutting in some roads that'll never get an overlay. If somebody will take care.
So I'm, I'm gonna walk through this because I think I'm figuring this out. So if we were to take table D on page eighteen, where the PCI score is somewhere between ninety and a hundred, which you say, really, okay, so let's, we all agree they have to pay a penalty if they're under five years. So at some point after five years, they're probably out of the ninety to a hundred range, is what you're saying in your documentation. For the most part, some stuff hangs in there, but let's say it drops to an eighty-eight in year six.
Right.
So now they're in the seventy percent range under the proposal that you've put together here, example. So then we would say, you're an eighty-eight, I'm Puget Sound Energy, I walk in, I say, I gotta cut across the street, it's Lakewood Drive that we just did a few, well, let's, let's say it's five or six years from now. And it's a beautiful street, you've put all this money into it. So then Public Works will then tell me, great, you have to restore it to the six inches or whatever asphalt that we have there. And you're also gonna pay us a penalty based upon sixteen dollars and fifty cents a square foot. Is that?
Correct.
And that just goes to the road fund.
Correct.
So I, ideally, in the public's mind, we're gonna take that money, hold it and use it for paving or something at some point. I mean, it's not gonna add up to a tremendous amount of money, maybe it will, hopefully it will. But that's the idea, we're, we're trying to incent them to say, hey, you know, before you decide you're just gonna go and start doing patches all over the place or whatever. All right. I, I think it's a neat idea, I think it's a, I mean, if you thought it of on your own, very good, very good work. Ingenious. Uh, we'll see how the utilities look. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Branser.
Hey.
Is that.
So explain to me, to what extent there would be exceptions? Like if a gas main broke and Puget Sound Energy had to, in emergency, go in and fix and mitigate something that was safety based, being able to go and do that. And I don't know that I'm comfortable with, I, I, I'm comfortable with them fix it, we fixed the street, but I guess I'm not comfortable with assessing them a penalty for, 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 for that, because I certainly wouldn't want them to defer that. And the same is kind of true of, 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 of other utilities. So that there ought to be some sort of situation that doesn't change the requirement to restore the pavement, but that generating a penalty doesn't seem to be appropriate. I don't like the word penalty being implied to, 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 to a fee or anything in, anyway. But particularly, that's a pretty negative thing that implies some guilt problem on, on the part of the, the, the person that's, that's doing that, that, you know, the person who, uh, a developer who has some, some lots and has a, 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 a street and it's gonna, and it's, and it's building and is going to, uh, that's gonna happen. I just don't know, there ought to be some categories of things to do that. I mean, a, a, a penalty because of poor planning where you're not to go in and cut up a street two years after we repaved it. I, I got no problem with that, but not so much so in responding to a legitimate emergency.
That's absolutely something we'll look into. Currently, how it's structured in the pavement and engineering manual, is there is a provision that allows for emergency work without a penalty?
Yeah, I just, it didn't seem to be in the proposals.
And that proposal is made by the engineer. Cause we had that with Lakewood Water a few years back. Anything further?
What's that?
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you much, the update, look forward to it. I will, I will note that from personal experience, trenchless technology isn't exactly perfect because I came home when my home was new and the cable company had come across the street, under the street and managed to puncture the natural gas line. We can laugh about it now. House was entirely open and there were three fire trucks. Good fun to listen to that, trenchless technology. We now move to a review of a memorandum of understanding with Rotary Club Lakewood Relative for Stillcom Park Pavilion. Rental housing. Excuse me, but, excuse me, I crossed one out and didn't see, rental housing safety program update, excuse me.
We were ready to try to get there.
Now, these guys want to take a victory lap, first time in two years. Although I went out there this weekend and some not really moving cars.
You got the floor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, it's, uh, members of the council, my privilege to bring you an update, uh, and as to where the rental housing safety program is now that we've moved into the inspection phase of the program. Some of the things that I hope to cover tonight is going through some of the registration, uh, what that has resulted in, the percentage of properties being registered, uh, going through the lottery process where we're at to date with inspections, um, kinda go through what we're seeing in those inspections, um, some of the things that are, we're failing consistently. And then going on to the next steps and continuing inspections moving forward. A couple of quick charts for you, the registration by units to date, the, the one on the left would be properties registered. So there's just over two thousand units registered, two thousand sixty-five, this is as of May first. Um, and there's ten thousand, almost one hundred units registered. The numbers at the bottom, that total rental properties, that's the total rental properties that we know of in the rental universe, um, at least in Lakewood's rental universe, and the total rental units. So it's about three thousand seven hundred properties and about almost fourteen thousand rental units. So.
By the way, that's a big deal, I just wanted to point that out, can you, this, this, these numbers, units registered, the, the numbers that we have still to go, is a significant accomplishment.
Which the next slide kind of starts to show you, you can see the registered as a percentage of total. So the rental units, um, are at roughly just in excess of seventy percent of the total rental units have registered. Um, the rental properties, just crossed over the fifty percent mark, so rental properties, there's, clearly if you've got most of the rental units registered and a substantial number of rental properties outstanding, that kind of shows you that there's a bunch of, uh, single families and duplexes and some of those that are, are yet to step up and register. So, uh, we've been working to get those properties, uh, kind of into compliance.
What, what are you doing, Jeff, to do that?
We've been mailing notices to all of the property owners, we're actually on a fourth notice we sent out on May first. And probably within three days of mailing that out, we started getting all kinds of phone calls. So every time we mail one of those out, we get hundreds of phone calls, either exempting or registering those units, so.
The, the other part of that too is if you were pulled from a lottery, you were pulled from a lottery whether or not you were licensed or registered.
Mm-hmm.
And so as we go through the inspection process, we are compiling people to register prior to the inspections, so it's kind of a two-fold approach.
And there's the additional data point, there's still a, a, a number of properties that are actually exempted. So we're finding some of those single family homes, we've, although we've sent them three notices, they've just not gone into the system and exempted their properties.
What, what percentage of, uh, uh, properties selected in the lottery were not registered?
Um, I, I didn't have that number, our, our system is not perfect in its calculations, but, uh, most of the units, well, actually it's probably, I, I could get that number for you, my guess would be somewhere in the sixty percent, forty percent range, we actually had.
Were not registered?
Sorry, registered would have been the higher number and forty percent's probably in the ballpark of.
So we might expect, and how many properties would be selected next year?
Uh, we were, when we did the original lottery, what basically took, I think we had nine thousand nine hundred or some units out there. We did a, a basically a twenty percent split, so we're looking at two thousand four hundred properties, two thousand five hundred, somewhere to get us over the five years to ten.
Next year will be unregistered, if squeezing down, it'll be less than the sixty.
Yeah, it's.
Forty, so you might get five to seven hundred additional properties registered through next year's lottery. Is that, am I correct?
I. Yeah, I mean, we're anticipating to get probably in the next go around, probably as we go through the year, I mean, we're starting to see a little bit of pickup as we send notices. So I'm, I'm kind of anticipating that either a lot of those single families are going to be exempted because we've sent them, in this case, will be five notices out to these individuals, so they'll need to be exempted or go register.
Another factor to consider is, is that the number of rental units in the properties are exchanging hands on a fairly frequent basis. We were counting this previously, twenty percent would change ownership within a quarter. So there's a, a real churn going on here as well, and we're trying to take that into account as we go through this.
Especially in this market.
So just to, just more information at this point.
Just rest there.
So. In twenty nineteen, and we get to a point of where a property is now in the twenty nineteen lottery and it's an unregistered property. Is this like taxes, where we're going to collect their twenty eighteen fee and their twenty nineteen fee when they do register?
If I can answer that question, when we get into the fall or the, the winter time of twenty eighteen, we, we are anticipating coming back with some recommendations on how to deal with the intransigent property owners who have not registered. And is it time to bring forward more aggressive enforcement with the actual issuance of penalties and fines? So that is something that we would, are trying to avoid and it's based upon how many people we can get to voluntarily comply and get them into the system. But that's, that's an issue that is not fully resolved and we're trying to think of creative ways of trying to get people in without, without fining them.
Well, you also have the issue where properties have changed hands, so we'd have to look at single family, how long they've owned it versus, if it recently changed, or multifamily, so there's some.
Changing hands aside, it would seem that asking the council for a policy decision about how to handle that, that you would then be able to include in your urgings of people to register this year earlier rather than waiting until Thanksgiving uh, before you begin to speak about consequences. You know, I, I think that if you have some, some, some proposals that we could deal with earlier, then you could, but that will become effective in twenty nineteen. You know, communicating them would help you perhaps get some willing compliance, uh, rather than waiting that late in the year.
I think we've done a little bit of that in some of our notifications already, but we can do more of it. I would also say that, you know, my direction from the city, the direction I receive from the city manager as well as the council is go easy the first year and see how this works, because this is a new program for, for many property owners as well as the city staff. And we were trying to be cooperative and make it work as much as possible.
Yeah, and I just agree with going easy the first year, but I also believe in being transparent about what it'll be after the first year, uh, and getting that somewhat decided. I know it's, you know, the fact that someone waits until August to register their property this year, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with going easy with that, but on the other hand, I'd like them to know what'll happen if they, if they don't. So I'm interested in getting options earlier than, rather than later.
Yeah, and along with the program, I mean, as, as you're aware, when the, when you voted to put the program together, the ordinance has some provisions for fees and penalties for not registering, so they're, they're fairly substantial. I believe they were, what, a hundred and fifty a day and five hundred a day thereafter. So I mean, there's some substantial penalties that, that we could use as a program to, to enforce and get people to do that, so.
I think I'll, like, next layer of noticing, we can remind people the importance to register now versus what could happen in upcoming years and what the fines and penalties could be, that may sway a few people. I'm not opposed to doing something like that, Mr. Branser, it's a good idea.
Yeah. So, uh, the next one is the lottery as, as we conducted it. So we did conduct the lottery on March twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Um, Dave was actually the initiator of that, when he came down to our office and pushed the little red button and nothing blew up or anything, it was great. So we had, uh, our lottery selected, and again, we picked twenty percent of the registered and unregistered properties, and it's based on Lakewood's historical mix, eighty-two percent multifamily, um, eighteen percent single family. From that, nine hundred and thirteen total properties were selected, two thousand four hundred and fifty-one units were selected. Kind of a, a fairly even mix of four hundred and fifty single family properties and four hundred and sixty-three multifamily properties. Majority of those, those units selected, as you can see in the table, were, uh, multifamily units. Kind of where we are, when we, we conducted the lottery in March twenty-first, uh, we did mail out notices on March twenty-third and on March twenty-sixth, so single families were notified first, uh, multifamilies were notified a few days thereafter. The computer system that we use also sends out email notifications, um, to those individuals that were a part of the lottery. Um, we noticed there was a few, there was some problems with, well, when you register, there's property owners who register and there's property managers who register, so some of the notifications would have gone to property managers versus owners. So we wanted to make sure and, and make sure that everybody got notified, so we did an actual mail notification to all of those selected.
In addition to the email system that we use.
So then we started our first inspections on April sixteenth, uh, we've been doing those for about a month now. And, uh, on May first, we sent out the, uh, fourth registration reminder letter, there was about twelve hundred properties that we sent that out to, um, and the phones have been going crazy ever since. This kind of shows you what the mix of the properties that we've inspected, and these have changed a little bit to date. Um, so as of this inspection, it talked about twenty-three properties that had been inspected. Uh, forty-eight percent were single family, thirty percent were duplexes and twenty-two percent were multifamily. Kind of where we are now, since this, uh, we have added a total of thirty-eight properties have been inspected. Uh, single family is about, it's fairly simple or fairly consistent mix, it's about fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent of the, uh, properties inspected have been single family. Uh, duplexes is about twenty-six percent, and then multifamily to date is about twenty-one percent. So the numbers that we're inspecting are, they're, they're higher, but they're fairly consistent with the percentages of inspections.
This is based upon first come, first served, so you call in, you get on our, our schedule and then we go and make the inspections. This is kind of telling me that the single family landlords and property management people are the first ones who have registered for the most part. And, uh, over time, you'll see the reduction of single family and more of the multifamily.
Yeah, and that's.
What's been the, um, the response, is it somewhat welcoming, I mean, if they're calling to schedule, they, they obviously wanna get it over with, right?
Yeah, we've, we've been pretty pleased, I mean, a, a majority of them have been very happy to have their units inspected. They, I mean, most of the ones that we've gone out to at the, in the onset were individuals who were very proactive, they registered early, they were ready to go. Um, some of the ones that we've inspected early were some of the non-registered properties, so we've done a few of those as well. We make them get their business license before we inspect their unit, but, um, they were, I don't know if it's pleasantly surprised, but they seemed okay with the inspections and, and didn't mind the intrusion and, and realized when we were out there, it wasn't really that difficult of a checklist to actually comply with, so.
Waving their fourth amendment flag with their AC.
No, we've, we've had some tenants who didn't really like us in their units, but the property managers have been okay so far, so. No, we've, we've had some tenants who didn't really like us in their units, but the property managers have been okay so far, so.
Let's just say that staff's been pleasantly surprised.
Yeah. One, one individual, yeah, I, I will never forget, we walked into her house and she looked above Heather and I, she goes, "I don't like strange people in my apartments," and I looked at Heather and I said, "Well, Heather, that means you, I guess you gotta go." So the inspection results, uh, kind of to date, and again, this, this goes back a little bit further, but you can kind of see that we've had a lot of failed inspections. We really didn't have any passed inspections until May first, so we, we've had a hundred percent failure rate until May first. And since then, we're at probably a sixty percent passing rate.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Um, on the fails, how long do you give them to correct their product?
Um, it depends on what they failed for. Most of these, I'll show you guys in the slides as we go forward. Most of the failures that we're finding are their life safety things, so we have a, life safety is a ten-day requirement and a, anything else in the checklist would be a sixty-day fix. There are some things that we, we would kind of give them a little bit more time for, if you have to order windows or you have to order components. I mean, some things you just can't get that fast.
Do you put six months to a year, or do you have a set time that you do?
No, we're, we're typically following up with these individuals. The life safety ones, well, basically all of these are gonna have life safety issues, so it's smoke detectors and electrical issues and so forth. We're typically following up with them at one week, and then we'll follow up with them again at a, at a two-week interval and kind of see where they're at and make sure that they're moving along. And, and a lot of them are, are getting their, their things fixed and having us re-inspect. We have a few inspections scheduled, we've had, I forget how many, seven, I think of these have passed since we've started inspecting, so they're, they're starting to schedule re-inspections. We haven't gone back to them all because we've had to kind of put them in the middle of all the other inspections.
Keep in mind, too, these numbers are changing daily.
The reason I asked the question, I attend the school board meeting, and the work that they're getting is that we've given them up to a year to correct any of the issues that they have.
Yeah, we haven't told anybody a year. It's, we want them to do it as quickly as they can for smoke detectors and, and GFIs and electrical issues, and those are, those are things that they can change out, and we've told them, those are, you can change that out in realistically two days. There's no reason why you can't change that out.
But Ms. Moss, if we found, went into an apartment complex with some really serious violations, it's gonna take a while to fix things. As long as the property owner, landlord is willing to work with us, we'll put them on a schedule to get the work accomplished, 'cause, uh, one of the things that we're careful about, too, is, you know, getting into tenant relocation, 'cause that costs everybody money. So if we can move around people from apartment complexes that are deemed safe, while the other ones are getting repaired, if there's vacancies, you know, we'll work with the tenant landlords on those kinds of things. But in some of these apartment complexes, I do take, I do suspect it will take several months to fix things.
But you're not, you haven't given anybody that much?
No.
I mean, a good example is we did the same thing with the BNI.
Right. Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, you can kind of see the, uh, properties, so even at this, uh, juncture, I'll kind of go tell you where we are now, but obviously we've conducted more inspections than this, so we're, we're at about two hundred and forty units represented of the, of the units inspected, I should say. We've inspect, or, where am I? We have inspected, um, thirty-eight properties, ninety-four units on those properties were inspected. And of, of the properties that we inspected, total units equal to, uh, two hundred and fifty-two units on those thirty-eight properties. So we've kind of got a small data set that we're working with right now. Um, we have scheduled on the list about, I think we have a total of thirty-eight more inspections that have been scheduled to date, not including re-inspections, and about eleven hundred total units, uh, will be represented at those inspections. So we're starting to kind of get some of the bigger properties in there. One of the biggest we inspect on June nineteenth is Morning Tree. It's four hundred and three units apartment complex, so we're starting to get some of the larger complexes coming in.
Proportionally, we can, on that one, we can only inspect up to fifty units, so roughly it's about twenty percent. So when we say that we're inspecting, we're not inspecting the entire complex because the way in which the law has been written doesn't allow us to do that.
It's a percentage.
It's a percentage, but it seems to be working fairly well so far.
So what happens when, hey, I, I'm encouraged by this, we, you know, we run at least one fatality a year in a rental fire. Uh, and if nobody has, you know, the common denominator seems to be people who have smoke detectors.
Yep.
Uh, so if we can save half of those people, I mean, it's, the, the whole program's worth it. If we save one, the whole program's worth it.
Yeah.
Uh, so what happens when we inspect a fifty-unit complex and it's obvious that they don't have water and smoke detectors and the twenty percent, we require them to re-inspect all units to make sure, or get some sort of compliance?
Yeah, we did on the, as, as you look at that chart, you can see the one, three from the bottom, the hundred and four units, uh, we inspected twenty-one. Every one of those twenty-one units were missing smoke detectors in many of the rooms. Um, they were missing water heater straps, they were missing GFI circuits, they were missing overflow valves. I mean, it was fairly consistent over all those units, so what we told them when we left is, one, they have to do every unit in the complex. A hundred and four units are clearly going to be, if we inspected them, exactly like these twenty-one units were, 'cause it was a same thing.
And the code, and state law allows us to do that, because if a significant number failed, you can go in and-
Re-inspect all of the units. So that, and that's what we've been telling them, it's like, you have two options, one, you can either fix them all, or two, we can come back in and inspect all of the units, and clearly they're probably all gonna be like they were, so we're able to get them to bring those into compliance, and then we'll go back in and inspect a percentage of the twenty-one units as well as some, we've, I've been telling them, we're gonna look at some random units. We'll give them two-day notifications so they can get their tenants notified, but we'll also be looking at the others. And I'm, I've been making, in this instance, we're having them do a, uh, either photographs in each and every unit, so I can see, they put fire or smoke alarms and they put the straps and stuff on the units, so physically take pictures as they go into the units, or videos or something, so I can see in all of those units that they've inspected them all.
So, uh, just a quick question on the follow-up then. At this point in the process, it sounds like it's been staffed in inspections as opposed to the third-party inspectors. So on those that have had re-inspection, following a failure, what's been our kinder, gentler approach to the re-inspection fees?
We've had, um, like, the first, the first property, the, the triplex, we went back in and I believe we charged him, actually, yeah, one unit inspection fee. Um, we, we've been kind of breaking them down and, and rather than charging them, if they had, like, the unit at the bottom, they had twenty-one of those that failed. We're, we're gonna do, uh, I believe, ten of those units when we go back and inspect, and three of them will be at random and seven will be those same. So rather than hit them for complete failure inspection rate of all of them, we've been trying to work with them. If it's a duplex, we'll be happy to go look at both of them and charge them one fee, it's the same property, so it should be very different. One twenty-five. So we've, we've been working with them to, to try and work on some of those. If, if it's things that we have to look at, I mean, if there's some, I'll show you some pictures later. I mean, there's some clear electrical violations that I'm not willing to, to let somebody take pictures on. I want to physically go out to those units and make sure they're there. If, if there's windows that don't meet egress, some of them don't. That's not something you can take a picture of. I need to come out and physically look at that and make sure it's right.
So, and, so, to help me out a little bit on the, the life safety issues, those are things that maybe, um, were never in some of these units because code has changed since they were built, but there are life safety issues and there's no, what do we call it?
Grandfather.
Grandfather again, or are they cases where they just went in and maybe made, did a major redo and they just, they never did strap the water heater? They never did put in the GFI plug just when they fixed it up? I mean, where are they? Is it just, what do you think?
Kind of some of both. I mean, some, some of the life safety, the, the codes have since changed, like some of the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. I mean, that's, that's all been updated, so that's, that's been changed since most of these buildings were built, but it's not very costly for them to do that, so I mean, you have to put a battery-powered smoke detector, eight to twelve dollars to do that. And do that in three bedrooms in a hallway, it's less than fifty dollars to do, so it's not a, a huge cost. Um, things that we, we would consider, I'm, I'm just gonna go through the checklist real quick. I mean, like, things like, uh, ver- vermin or rodent infestation? I have not, no. We're going to. Um, things like, uh, obviously egress, so bedroom windows that don't meet egress or that have been changed, that are made too small. Um, things like, uh, obviously doors, if egress, stairs and railings and rails.
Egress issues are something you're gonna go down and inspect.
Yes. Yeah, that's not something you can take a picture of. That's, that's, that's a big life safety thing, one, for, for a fireman to be able to get into a unit, and two, for somebody to be able to get out of the unit, so those are-
So, just to be clear, but, you know, two, two life safety issues that where units were compliant when they were built or last major remodel and part now, common ones would be bedroom windows too small.
Correct.
And they don't have GFI, 'cause they're never wired for GFI.
GFIs, straps on water heaters and smoke-
By accident. So if you go into a unit that's sixty years old, that's in good shape, and it doesn't have a GFI, that's one question that's come up from constituents is, do I have to rewire my whole place? Because, you know, you can't, it isn't as simple as just swapping it out.
Actually, it, it is. I mean, it can have some ramifications on your electrical system, but a GFI is a, is a, basically a breaker at that point. So if there's anything downstream of that, it will affect those circuits downstream as well. So if there's plugs after that, it'll shut them off as well. But it's, it's not something that is very costly, it's, it's, you can actually just switch one of those out and, and plug it into that circuit. It will, it will shut off that circuit.
There's two different kinds. One looks like it's really GFI and one's really grounded, operates fully.
But e- either of them will work. If, if you put a GFI on a grounded circuit, it will work the way it's supposed to. I mean, it's supposed to send it into the, it basically detects a ground fault. If, if it's not grounded, it, it doesn't have a ground, but it still can detect a ground fault. There isn't anything that it can ground into, but it will still shut that circuit off. So it's, it works the same way, it's just not quite the same way.
Yeah, um, around the GFI question, which seems to be a significant item to do that. Uh, that's a health safety issue.
We have identified it as that.
Issue. Um, does fixing that something that requires a permit from HLNIS for GFI? To rewire circuits and-
Technically, you're changing a circuit, so yes, you are supposed to have one. I can't tell you if they're getting them, 'cause I haven't gone out and looked at any yet, so.
Say that again?
I said, it is a, anytime you modify an electrical circuit, you're supposed to get an electrical permit. I haven't gone out to re-inspect for any of those yet, so I don't know if they are or if they are not.
Licensed electrician.
Or a homeowner could do it, yeah, if you own the property.
I do, I do.
But you have to have, you're supposed to get the permit.
Yes.
And, um, but we're not asking for it.
I haven't gone out to look yet, so.
You are considered a homeowner of this reality.
Correct.
You know, I, I guess that I would be cautious if we're identifying a deficiency, then we're re-inspecting and saying the deficiency has been corrected. And it's unpermitted work that should have had a permit. Um, you know, I think that when you have that sort of a deficiency around electrical things, or, or, or anything of that matter, where, you know, you should inform a person that fixing this requires you to, to get a permit to be able to go and do that. And certainly, it should be an element of our re-inspection to see if the work that has been done was appropriately permitted and thus done by a competent person or inspected. My, 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 my other question is, what kind of reception have your inspectors gotten from tenants? That is one of the things, as we were always going to put this in about how the tenants were going to be up in arms.
Uh, only had one that I, that I mentioned earlier that was not happy to have us there, but, uh, a lot of the other tenants have been, I mean, they seem amenable to having us there. They, they haven't said anything ill in our direction. We, we've actually had a few tenants, what we've found is, most of the tenants are just kind of there and they don't say anything until the, the property manager or somebody goes away and then they'll come over and say, "Hey, my electrical circuit for my heaters hasn't worked for two years," and then they'll go away, and so, I mean, they're telling us stuff and nobody's around, so they're, it seems like they like us there. Um, I haven't, I haven't really heard a lot of comments, positive or negative from them.
There was one instance where we were there at the door, he opened it up, he went back to bed with his significant other and stayed in bed. The kids were playing, inspection was performed, so it was very nonchalant, so it varies from, varies from unit to unit, but we haven't seen the adverse negative reaction that some people have been talking about.
That was a- It's a little awkward, yeah, when you have to go in and inspect a bedroom and there's people still asleep in the bed, and it's like, we're coming in to inspect. Wow.
Go there.
Yeah.
Okay. On that net. Anything further?
Uh, a couple of quick things to kind of show you what we're seeing, and you kind of hit the, the nail on the head. Some of the things that we're seeing failed, obviously, are smoke detectors, water heaters, uh, and GFIs and other electrical sort of issues. And there's some structural components that we've found, some issues on some of these places.
What was that?
This. Why does the pointer not work? There it is. Oh, you can't really see the pointer. But obviously, the picture on top is how a water heater should be installed. You typically have straps on them, we don't find those, though. The overflow valve, um, is missing in many of these. That apartment complex is, the one we just talked about this morning, the name escapes me, Dave?
I don't remember.
I can't remember either. It's, uh, they had a bunch of work done on this, or at least improperly done work on this apartment complex, but the, the decks, the building inspector went out, we had to get him to go out there and look at this.
Just the one gentleman was complaining about, a public comment some time ago?
There was some water leaking into one of the basement units. Merrill Garden, there we go, Merrill Creek.
So that's what it is.
Yeah. And so this unit has significant rot on the back of the house, the decks, you can't really see in this picture very well, 'cause I had to make it kind of small, but you can see there's four-by-four posts that have been added on to this thing. All of those beams have kind of rotted out. So they decided to put four-by-four posts, which I guess is better than nothing, um, from the first floor to the third floor, but all of that's bearing on a three-inch piece of concrete on the slab, so it's really-
Below slab.
Yeah, it's, it's bearing on nothing, so it's, and the amazing thing is there's a guy on the third-floor deck standing out there, watching us take pictures. I wouldn't be anywhere near that deck.
Merrill Creek was, uh, was permitted by Pierce County before incorporation. We were just incorporated when that project was under construction, was completing at the time. There's some problems with the, the, uh, the way that which the property drains on site that they need to fix. And there's, there's a significant cost factor, and the landlord's gonna have to fix it.
Okay.
So we're finding things out, all kinds of-
This was missing, I, I redid this and there was another- Another slide missing.
Was it Holly Holmes' daughter?
I think it was on Merrill's.
It's not the correct.
Daughter of-
Yeah, this, I've, this isn't, oh, unfortunately, it's not the exact slide or the presentation I have.
We have this.
There you go, you have it. So in the next slide, you can see, I mean, that's one of the apartment complexes that we went to, and you can kind of, unfortunately, I don't have it on up here, but you have it upstairs. The, you can kind of see the three pictures. One of them has a, an awning that's completely failing and falling down on an apartment complex. And the other two pictures, there's some very creative wiring that I have seen in the apartment complex. They used molded extension cords all over throughout the complex. They wired them into fixtures, they wired them out of fixtures, they wired them everywhere. It's just-
Seventy-eight.
Yep, page seventy-eight. It's not even close to safe.
So what do you do on that case?
That one, that's one of the ones where all of the units, basically, we're gonna have to have them go in and do a bunch of stuff in the units, and we're going back and inspecting, I believe, all of the units that failed as well as a couple of other units. So that, that one had significant issues. That's one apartment complex.
These three?
Those three are from one complex, and those are not even kind of all the really bad stuff. Those are, well, actually worse stuff there. It was just something that would present easily.
And that's, and that's a case, and that's a case where they're gonna have to get a permit.
Oh, yeah.
Call a permit because it's major work.
Yeah, this is-
Have to get the right electrical people, and we're gonna inspect the work.
This has, this is gonna require a building permit, this is gonna require electrical permit, this is, yeah, all, all kinds of permits.
And how many days does it have?
The smoke detectors, they said they could get done in a week, uh, which I'm fine with. The electrical, they're gonna have to get an electrician out there, and, and we're working with them on the schedule to get it done. It's, I think they have twenty-two units, so it's not something they're gonna get corrected very quickly.
Going with the mayor's comments previously, this, this is a life safety issue, this is potentially saving some lives.
Where's this one located at?
I don't remember.
Klein, this is either Klein or Kendrick.
Okay.
Hundred and sixth block, Klein.
This one's something like it would be ready for an abatement process.
When I walked out of the- When I walked out on the back of this property, I told the property manager, I said, you give two options with this. One, I'll do the dangerous building program, and I can tear this down for you, like, next week. Or you can tear this down for yourself next week, because this is clearly dangerous, and this should not be there. And she, she was in full agreement, but the property owner has not wanted her to tear it down, so...
Like, exterior, how does state property owner...
Yeah, yeah.
This is also someone who did not get a license that we compelled them to prior to making this.
Well, here's example number one, why this program makes sense.
Yeah, the property manager wants to comply. She's been trying to get the owner to do things, and every time we would say stuff, she would, she showed us letters that she's sent to the property owner, so it's, it's, there's, there's issues where, yeah, it's, it's...
So, this doesn't, that, that thing doesn't, that awning thing doesn't need any permit?
No, it's, it's completely overframed. It's literally collapsing. The, there's a shed behind it that's got all kinds of electrical, electrical issues. It's collapsing, and it, it's literally on the back of somebody's porch. So, you go out at the back of the unit, and that's what they stand under when they go out their back door.
But if we're only inspecting for a month, I mean, I think, and we're making pretty substantial progress. The other thing I would point out, too, is that we were contacted by the City of Tacoma today.
So, are you compiling, compiling a, uh, kind of a parade of horrors?
Not yet, but we will.
Photos, I am, oh, yeah.
As you find, as you find those things, like, date them and document them.
Great keep, total.
Keep them in a electronic scrapbook, so that we can use them as...
Yeah, I have an inspection photo file that I've been keeping, so, properties by year.
But I'd also keep the right side pages of that scrapbook.
Oh, yeah.
With good news stories.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Um, I, I do, first of all, I think this is a great start. I think this is doing exactly what we wanted it to do, because you, you, I mean, you haven't run into a, although I think that one is a pretty horrible case, but we're not having to red tag the whole building. But clearly, this is the kind of stuff that I think we were hoping all along, that let's do these life safety issues, let's fix these things up. So, on the flip side, and, and just to make your life more complicated, um, somehow track how much work is actually occurring because of this, the other ones, is there a way to do that?
Yeah, when you come in for, well, for electrical permits, we can't shut, we can't.
Sure.
But for building permit activity, yes. And if it's part of an abatement, we could have a ticker on our system to, to track that and see.
Or it'll just show up in the general numbers that we're, we have more...
You're going to see more remodels.
Remodels.
We have it.
That, that'll probably be good enough.
Yeah.
And you've seen an uptick in that in this past year anyway, so, you know, you have a, you know, we were talking that, you know, you'd see a change in three to five years. I think you might see a change faster than that. And you could fairly see a major change in the quality of life in housing units in Lakewood fairly quickly, if we stay on top of this.
In your inspection, on the back, I'm looking at the back of this building here, there's a lot of mold and moss and stuff on that. Is that part of the inspection that that would be...
When the mold and moss is present, that means that there's the, there's a lack of ventilation, proper ventilation.
Or water intrusion.
Or water intrusion. And sometimes, in order to keep the cost down as far as utilities, the renters will close off the heat or whatever to that unit. And so, when you start doing that, then that's when you have a propensity to create the moss and the like. Or if, if you don't have something that was properly built for drainage, then we're seeing it the other way. And in another subject, we will get a lot of, of, of balconies and stairwells and the thing that will need replacement. That's a guaranteed, um, I mean, people, tenants will, landlords will take them out because they're rotted, and they go back and install something that's kind of sort of temporary. And there are specific requirements for stairwells that have to be maintained.
That's a life safety.
It's a life safety, as you keep people from falling off the second floor.
Well, we have the P L U, I mean...
Yeah, as an example, but you'll see more of that as we get into the apartment complex.
Yeah.
Going back to the Tacoma thing, they're interested in what we're doing, and they've asked for copies of, uh, our procedures and forms.
The Tacoma thing, you mean?
We were contacted today by them. They've heard about our rental housing safety program, and they're asking kinds, all kinds of questions.
They collect money for theirs.
Yeah, they do, a lot. Um, and we don't. I mean, our, you know, be honest with the council here, you know, the cost recovery is important to me. And, and, you know, I track how much money is coming in and making sure that what we're expending is in equal proportion. That's why we didn't hire an outside consultant to help us with inspections, we're doing it internally, because the price tag was too high. But, you know, that's a budgetary issue that we'll talk more about as we get into budget. But, you know, my goal, like, the department's goal, and I'm sure everybody else is the same, is to try to make this an ongoing system where you pay to play, and the costs are not exorbitant, and it keeps running the system. My goal, too, would be to see if we can't run this, this program with this one person. And Pasco was able to do that, and with the level of automation that we've already are using, I'm hoping that we will continue to do that. So, that's the goal. Whether or not we make it or not is a different question, and we're also still in, in an experimental stage here, so keep that in mind.
This is a really good start.
One, one thing I think we're going to see, too, right, right now, we're kind of inspecting, I won't say the cream of the crop, but we're inspecting houses that people, when we go out there, they're expecting to pass. So, we're not looking at properties that have, have a lot of issues. As we go through this into the end of the year, we're going to start seeing some of those other properties that are not being maintained. So, I think where you're seeing some of the issues on some of the really easy life safety things, you're going to see an increase in some of the real big issues that we're going to start seeing.
Have you, as a contingent, I'm sorry, I'm just interrupting, but have you, as a contingency, developed a plan for when we have to red tag a property, if you suppose? If, if, if it's like a, I, I can't let these people stay here tonight. What, do we have, you've developed some contingencies?
We do. So, yeah, we've, what, at least what the plan will be is, one, that's, that's not our call to, to tag at first. So, code enforcement and, and the building department will end up coming out, helping us with that. Um, we also do the rental relocation, the fifty-nine eighteen oh eight five. So, we, we write one letter that the owner is responsible to reimburse the tenant X amount of dollars based on their rent. So, they've got to reimburse them for that. We also have C D B G dollars that we can move them out of there, and then get reimbursement from the owner. You can use abatement dollars, you can use all kinds of...
Also, in an emergency, we can take advantage of some of the police department's funds. And try to move people over to the home hotel if necessary.
Some smallness quality funds.
Some smallness quality funds. We have a yellow tag and a red tag procedure. We're trying to be flexible with this, but ultimately, we're trying to scare the property owner into being responsible.
Okay.
Good job. Do, do you feel you have all the tools in place from a code and regulations standpoint to, uh, affect cost recovery if we have to pay for people's relocation?
Yes, we've been, we've been very good at doing that. In all the times that we've done rental relocation, we've been reimbursed all of our monies every time.
Legal department's been very good at, at supporting us in that process. I, I will also say this, after doing this in relationship to watching other programs that have failed, and it's going to say that I like lawyers, and I, maybe not so much, but, you know, the whole issue of...
So...
But when they, when they decided to challenge Pasco's program and go to the State Supreme Court, and they came back with that decision, and then the legislature codified it, that was the best thing for, for the City of Lakewood and others. It really established some basic ground rules to work from. As long as you stay within those rules, I think we're fine. We definitely tried to do that.
Thanks to the lawyers.
Thanks to the lawyers.
Anyway, that's, that's a nice recovery. I thought you were bucket for another absence.
That could be a forced absence. Okay, I know you have other business.
All right, well, thank you very much. That's encouraging you to start and make the progress. So, now we move to a review of memorandum of understanding with the Rotary Club of Lakewood relative to the Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. Ms. Dodsworth.
Good evening, Council. Um, so, uh, I'm here tonight to share with you an update on the MO, the latest M O U. We're on M O U number two regarding the pavilion in the park with the Rotary Club of Lakewood. So, this is, uh, a year ago, council approved an M O U that showed the commitment that we wanted to move forward with this project, and it outlined, um, uh, what we're thinking about and the direction we're going in, some timeframes. So, this is a more specific M O U that really clearly outlines, um, primarily financial expectations for the Rotary Club, and then what the city would be covering as well, and then responsibilities as we're moving into construction, which we're under construction now. Um, but to make sure that we're really clear that we're going to be doing proper bidding, who was supervising, and expectations of Rotary in the city, which is outlined as well. Um, so, the M O U's attached, it's, it's fairly clear. And then they, um, there will be a final M O U that'll come after construction, so we can finalize those, those details of legal ownership, potential use of days, um, any warranties or issues that might be outstanding based on what's happening throughout the time period, so that we can clarify all those things, um, also talk about liability, et cetera, um, so that everybody's real clear who's on first as we move forward. And so, there would be another, um, potentially one more, uh, final M O U regarding this project after construction's completed, um, and project's been accepted, um, accepted. I did give you a heads up, uh, in the report, Rotary's intention, they do, uh, they would like to put in an application or proposal to name the stage. They understand it's the pavil- pavilion. That's what we're calling it this week, the pavilion at Fort Silicon Park, um, with the idea of naming the stage the Rotary Stage. They, um, we do have a naming policy, uh, in the city, and so they would follow that procedure, which would be submitting an application and justification for that. According to our policy, it would be submitted to the city manager, who would then forward it to council, and council would decide if you wanted to use a process such as working with the Park and Rec Advisory Board or another group to review it, or just go forward with that. Council would make the final decision regarding the process and also the decision regarding any naming. And then they've also, um, uh, proposed, uh, in the final M O U, the opportunity to have some, um, Rotary Days, similar to how we have city days at McGavick Center, some Rotary Days. They have, um, requested three days, and council could decide what that, um, impact would be to revenue, uh, use, expenditures, et cetera. Uh, we put a value based on, um, the business plan, and then the, the fee schedule hasn't been updated yet. Uh, that'll be coming to council probably, uh, after the park board reviews, at which they'll be looking at it for the first time in May. So, the M O U's provided. I have, uh, I'm happy to answer any of your questions, or talk about the project, or where we're at, where we're going. But, um, so far, everybody seems to be on the same page, and, uh, this was just to formalize, uh, those, um, expectations regarding the construction.
What was the name that they wanted to be?
Uh, well, what they've proposed is the Rotary Stage at the Pavilion in the Park.
Ms. President.
Yeah, the name is Dodsworth. The concept of Rotary Days, and you compared it to our relationship with the McGavick Center. So, the Rotary would want to be able to rent it out for three days and keep the income.
Uh, there, uh, I, I think what they had proposed was, um, three separate days, could be days in a row, but one would be primarily make a weekday, like a Friday, where they could have an annual meeting at the park, at the pavilion, where they could do maybe a summer party or something. And so, then, and then two event days, which would be probably a weekend type event, um, and that they would have, they wouldn't have to pay a permit fee. We would certainly, depending on the event, number of people, impact to the park, there could be things like sanitation, or garbage, or security, or something like that. If there was an alcohol permit, um, or insurance, uh, those things would be in addition. But the, that's what, that's what I would probably recommend for council to consider, is that if they were going to accept any of those days, I think their intention is to not have to pay the special use permit fee, which would vary based on, uh, and then they would, um, get whatever revenue is generated, if it was a concert or a special event, or they would generate the revenue from that event.
But no, okay, I guess I'd have to look, I guess I would be concerned if they were renting, if we're, we're contracting the use of the pavilion to a third party. It's different than them holding an event where they're revenueing, but rather than them renting it to the American Red Cross, for the Red Cross, or the fundraiser would be problematic.
I would think so. They would, that could be, that could be clearly outlined in whatever the final M O U is, is that it would be specifically for a Rotary sponsored event, not to be auctioned off or given away.
They thought about renting out to the Lions Club, but they didn't know they could. Quantitative, yeah.
Yeah. But council can outline all those conditions in your, in your next M O U, specific to how those days could be used, number of days. And then we'd have, uh, a better idea specifically about what the revenue impact would be, what the expenditures are. There's always expenditures associated with everything at the park, so...
Priority.
Priorities, et cetera, right. And it would be a mutually agreed upon day. I mean, it would be considered, you know, currently, we, um, let our, um, nonprofits and community groups that we have regular events out there, we contact them in October-ish and give them about thirty days to make notice of those days they want to continue. We try and be consistent with, you know, if it's always the third Saturday or the fourth Tuesday or something. And then, um, after that, it ends up being kind of a first come, first served, so they would have to work within those. We wouldn't bump somebody. But that's, that's how we operate.
Anecdotally, I've been told that one of the reasons to do one of the three days is to have their annual meeting or a meeting out there, and then they go forth and do their maintenance for the year, or whatever, to the landscaping and grounds. It's kind of part of their contribution annually. So, I mean, there's some value in having them out there to do their thing after lunch, and then the guys stay, the gals stay and do their work.
Yeah, the refurbishing, the big toy, I think that's...
Yeah.
Any questions?
I was out there on Thursday. I, do they, they have a every Thursday construction meeting? So, I went out there with James, and Scott was out there, and, uh, the contractor, and the other Rotary guy. So, I, I think it's, you know, the gentleman indicated it's on schedule. So, there's a big, you know, construction schedule with targeted lines and bar graphs about dates and what happens when, and so, looks like they're on track. Yeah, so the, if you haven't been out there, the roof trusses are up. They'll probably get cheated at some point. There was one little glitch that happened with regard to the plans and specs on the, the dirt area between the stage and the first wall.
The grating.
Grating needs to come down eighteen inches.
They'll excavate a bit, but that's okay. We're going to be, it's sloped anyway. It'll end up being fine.
Yeah, we'll use all the dirt, but that's just a little bit of a glitch.
It's a civil issue.
Yeah.
Do we have our first event planned?
Summerfest.
Oh, okay. You have some bands out there for the summerfest.
It, well, that'll be, that's the international area, so it'll be actively, I mean, we'll have to see if we have occupancy and all of that, and how, how it'll be, um, completed, but the idea is to be able to appreciate it during the summerfest.
Will the electrical be fine?
That's the plan. They're, it's a good contractor. They're working really hard, they're working fast, and they're doing a good job, so we're fortunate. We have a good contractor.
I've walked by there sometimes, real quarter to six. The guy that said that closed state off their work. I've seen him out there, so I, I, I agree with what you said. They are working hard.
Yeah.
It's like I said, I walk by there at six, six fifteen, Tuesday, Thursday night workouts. There's just somebody on site working.
The concrete work, it looks good.
Yeah.
How are they bringing in more electrical? All right.
I beg your pardon?
Where are they bringing in the electrical?
We have, um, we have power poles all down in the lane, and so we'll pull off of a pole there.
Plenty.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else? All right, thank you. We move to review of surface water management fees. Mr. Vigran.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, as a follow-up to the May seventh public hearing, um, on Swimpiece, we're here this evening to provide additional information on the rate, um, credits. The information that we'll provide is specific to the policy and justification and the mechanics for changing the rate from the maximum eighty-five percent to forty-three percent. We're providing you a comparison of the credits with other jurisdictions that we've had previously compared with, um, the number of properties and parcels that are taking advantage of the current program, and the options to grandfather existing systems of the eighty-five percent credit with the new systems adhering to the forty-three percent. What we're asking for today and requesting of the city councils to provide direction with the credit program for the inclusion in the ordinance on May twenty-first. We have our engineering services manager, Greg Vigran, who's going to go into details about the, uh, credits. And then we also have our... And then we also have our Engineering Services Public Works Director, Paul Bissinger, who's also available. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've provided you some additional information based on the meeting last week and, and some of the public comments that were made. Wanted to note that, that we started out with the eighty-five percent credit, or the ten percent, eighty-five percent credit range. We just basically copied the county's program initially when we incorporated. We weren't able to get a lot of history as to the relevance of those numbers from the county. But we will point out that, that they're also, that they've recently reduced their maximum credit to thirty percent as well. They are grandfathering in the properties that already have a credit, and they're, they're gonna phase that out over ten years. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, or if you have any questions on that. As far as the, the reasoning or the thought on going from eighty-five percent to forty-three percent, FCS Group put together some information in really comparing what they considered the, the base costs of the program, the stormwater program, which are just the things that are needed regardless of private property, compared to the use costs. And the use costs are basically the extra burden from the additional properties. And there's some slides starting on page ninety-six that go into a little bit more detail are their, the example that they previously provided. But ultimately, the, what they came up with was that forty, forty-three percent represents that use cost. And so that's really the value that's added by, you know, the properties that are keeping their stormwater on site. So that's why they would recommend no larger than a forty-three percent credit.
So what goes into base costs? See the term without a definition?
Yeah, so they had a quite extravagant spreadsheet that I didn't bring along, but it was primarily staff costs was, was a fair amount of it. Just other things that are, that are gonna be required regardless of, again, just adding on, you know, the additional properties. Whereas the use costs were primarily around the operational side of things, in terms of the, the maintenance of the system, which obviously would be increased if you had a larger system, because you have more systems connected, for example.
So base costs are attributable to all property in the city?
And PBS.
Correct, yeah, like our, our stormwater permit costs, our staff costs, just those things that are, that would be needed regardless, or, you know, that are just, I've turned over the wording that they used.
Yeah, they were, you wrote in there.
Yeah.
What does that apply to? Commercial properties, commercial properties that have stormwater management system, every property in the city?
The base costs?
The base costs.
So that's just the, the cost for us to, to basically manage the stormwater program. So, I mean, it applies just citywide.
The general government cost of that.
Correct.
It's allocated by square footage, or what?
Yeah, and then how's that allocated? What's the, what's the percentage? How does it, how does the base cost turn into a percentage with respect to the properties that have these stormwater facilities?
Yeah, so they, they had it, and, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't bring the whole spreadsheet. But they, on page ninety-seven, they show at least the, the total, which they got the base at about two point five million dollars. And they had the rationale as to how they got there. I, I just can't tell you more than, than that without looking at the spreadsheet.
Assume, assume that number, how, how does that get applied against properties? Is it square footage, impervious surface, assessed value?
So let me kind of step in a little bit and talk a little bit more about this. So when you have your, your system costs. So for the stormwater utility, you have your engineering costs, your overhead, your benefits, you've got all those functions. And then you have the costs that are directly attributable to the operation and maintenance of your system. What they did was they took a look at it and said, everything that's not related to the operation and maintenance of the system is your base cost. That's our NPS permit cost, that's our engineering, that's our staff, that's our, our phones, lights, rental space, everything else.
Fixed costs.
When, yeah, fixed costs, exactly right. When you're talking about the operational side, the operational costs, they took a look at that and said, this is what we are paying in the operational cost. Now, to try to apportion how much of that is associated with city infrastructure versus private, what they did was they said, what's the total amount of impervious surface we have in the city? And what percentage of that is city-owned infrastructure? The roads, the parks, the parking lots around City Hall, all that is public infrastructure. That was about, if I remember correctly, about nineteen percent of the total amount of impervious surface. So what they said, when you, when you take the operational cost, and they use a couple of different columns, and they say, our cost, our percentage of the operational cost is nineteen percent. Everybody else is gonna be eighty-one percent. When you run all the rest of the costs, which are city costs, engineering, et cetera, et cetera, the base cost, and then you do the proportionality of it, that's where they came up with and said, effectively, when you look at it, the end game, forty-three percent of your costs is associated with taking care of your operations system, which is basically a percentage of the total impervious service.
What's the denominator? My question is just what the denominator is, I understand all that.
Okay.
What does the, forty-three percent of what?
The total aggregate cost for the community, do you have that?
No, I mean, it's, what's it applied against? It is.
Must be the overall.
You've got, you've got, is it impervious surface?
Impervious surface, yes. It's, it's actually impervious surface, the simplest way to put it.
Okay.
No, I'm just thinking.
And, and I noticed that there are four city properties with fifteen thousand dollars worth of credit on here.
That's correct.
Why do we take money out of one pocket and put it in a restricted pocket?
So, that's a good question. Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's, that's a good question. It's kind of weird that we charge ourselves, but we do, or I think it's still real property, so we take advantage of the credit program as well. So, but it does seem a little ironic, because it's like going in one door and out the other as far as the money.
So why do we charge ourselves stormwater?
I think because we're required to. And I think I verified that with FCS Group. Because again, our property is real property, even though we're a government agency.
And we're not exempt because we're government, right?
Correct.
Religious organizations are exempt, though?
Correct.
No, we've exempted the religious organization.
Right.
Right.
And that exemption is based upon what Pierce County has historically done.
Yeah, we don't charge for roads, right?
We do not charge ourselves for roads.
The county is extraordinarily expensive.
It's sort of hit and miss on which jurisdictions charge for roads and which ones don't.
The primary reason for charging yourself for roads in every place that does always gives a significant reduction to the fee that they charge the roads is because if you don't charge yourself for roads, you can't charge the Department of Transportation. And so that's the only way you can get cost recovery for DOT. And most jurisdictions who do not, do not have a lot of contribution from the DOT right away. And they determine that it, it's, it's, it's not worth it trying to charge the general fund for transportation to feed the stormwater utility to get the amount of money they're getting out of the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Ressler.
Yeah, it, we've had the public hearing that one of the things that some of the folks that brought comments who were commercial customers is, that is not shown on the charts that you provided us, is, they were saying they wanted to at least get some amortization to recover the costs of their initial investment in the system that qualified them for an exemption. And so if someone spent six hundred thousand dollars on a system, they were looking for the exemption above the baseline, forty-three percent, to be increased up, at least up until there was a recovery of that cost, however many years that, that took. I mean, if they, someone, you know, someone who had a, invested six hundred thousand dollars in a system and, and was, and was gonna, and the system was efficient enough to get them currently in eighty-five percent, what they wanted to do is keep getting the eighty-five percent until the difference between the eighty-five and the forty-three equaled what they'd invested, you know, and then it could roll back. And we get a lot of engineering documents, we require a lot of engineering documentation from anybody applying for an exemption, that I would imagine identifying the cost of putting in that, that system, that these, those systems that were put in while we were in the city, because we would have had permitted costs and, and, and dollar values there to be able to go and do that, to determine an amortization schedule that they could, let's say that we want to amortize it over ten years. Then you look at, okay, your, your, your fees are gonna be this for forty-three percent, that, but that above that, how, how much greater of an exception should you get to amortize that? Sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years before you went back to forty-three. Something of, along that line sounded like what folks were concerned, and, and that would maintain the incentive to put in a quality system in new development.
I can answer that question. I mean, the irony is, anybody's gonna have to put in the same type of system, regardless if they get a credit or not. So it's kind of a misnomer that we offer them a credit at all, because the systems aren't gonna be different whether they get a credit or not. They've still gotta meet the water quality standards that are state law, that are passed down to us. It's just that they applied for a credit and they're getting a credit.
Well, you know, I, I understood.
So the system would be different.
It seemed to be that, that folks were saying, I've got, I've built a system and I take care of a hundred percent of my stormwater.
Right.
Okay, that none of, no water comes off of my property into your city system.
Right.
And, and that, it's, I, I'm surprised to hear you say that every single piece of new construction from now on will never provide, is not allowed to provide any stormwater going into the city system.
Well, if they were going into the city system, they'd have even more onus requirements as far as, because they'd have to control the flow as well. And they'd still have that maintenance on site. So there's really, I, I heard what they said, but I don't agree with what they were saying as far as, I don't think they understand the fact that they would still have to, to meet our current standards if they put a drainage system in today. If they tied in, then to our system, then they'd have to also control flow along with having water quality features. And they'd still have maintenance. What's that?
Those are all state law standards.
Correct.
We're just enforcing.
And so then they would still have maintenance on their property to, to, because they'd still have a stormwater system to maintain. So in spite of what they said, I don't agree with some of what was said. I understand what the one gentleman was saying about the fact that we, two years ago, they had to hire an engineer basically to certify that their system was still being maintained. And that's what Mr. Purrier was referring to in terms of recovering that cost over like a six-year period is what he mentioned. I know Mr. Arbeany mentioned some other things, but that's where I don't agree with him, because again, the systems would have to meet current standard, whether they're tied into our system or they're keeping their water on site. And they'd still have to maintain their stormwater infrastructure on their own property, even if they were tied into our system. Our maintenance starts once it hits the street.
So, so the, the incentive question regarding new developers doesn't really.
There is no incentive.
There, 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 there's, there's, there's no difference between an incentive and not to be able to go and do that, other than the yes, no incentive. I will build anything, or I will build something.
That's one reason we're, you know, encouraging to reduce from such a high benefit.
But that's to the future you both are speaking to, correct? If I understand this discussion? What about the present? Because I heard you say, there were parts of their arguments you agreed with, and I want to bring the conversation back to what you were agreeing with you heard the gentleman from Lakewood Business Park talk about.
Right, so we do have a couple of options that we, that we want you to consider, that would basically grandfather in, reducing the credit over a period of time to, at least that they'd have some time to adjust for that. So, and we'll talk about that here in a minute.
So let, let, let me go back just to make a point. The new warehouse at Lakewood.
Yes.
They have to do it to current.
Yep.
NPS, stormwater. So the way they've designed that is they're supposed to design that huge, all that impervious surface where the water will drain off.
Yep, and it's already constructed. And they put in vaults, you know, in order to get the water quality treatment, and then it's just giant infiltration systems.
It is more effective to infiltrate your stormwater on site than it is to build a detention system and discharge it offsite if you have highly permeable soils in the first case. Because the requirements to discharge a very small, minute amount, which would naturally come off the soil with highly infiltrative soils, results in your vault being so extremely large, you can't afford to do it. So that would make no sense whatsoever. There isn't an engineer or developer out there who would want to do that kind of a practice. If they can take a small piece of the property, they'll take all the water and dump everything into it, provide the water quality treatment, and then infiltrate it on site.
So it's cost-effective to infiltrate typically. It's actually cheaper than building, you know, a detention pond.
They gotta get the grid.
They can park on it or whatever to.
What break does a developed property get for? A de, developed property get for improving its system? Rate reduction?
A break for improving, oh, you mean if it's an existing system? Or I mean like a?
So somebody types a developed property, it's just looking at King County code here. If you have a developed property and you come and re, rework your stormwater system to create hundred percent infiltration, they, you get a fifty percent rate reduction. Do we have anything like that?
Then they would qualify for the credits.
Yeah, they could apply for a credit.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we offer, or that's what we have available, this credit program.
So if I'm understanding your question, if they have a pre-existing site and they're discharging it to our system, and they come in and say, I don't want to discharge your system, I want to build some, keep it all on site.
Yep.
Then they would go from not having the opportunity to be a part of the credit program to being able to have the opportunity to be a part of the credit program. And so they would get, depending on where we landed on this, eighty-five, forty-three, something, they would get that kind of a rate decrease on their stormwater fee. I think what they would find is that the cost of doing the engineering and the construction would never pencil out based on the rate credit that they would get. Assuming they got a, even an eighty-five percent credit, it, it would never pencil out because it's so expensive to do.
They'd have to do it anyway, right?
If they were to redevelop the site, then they would have to do it anyway, you're absolutely right. If they were doing it out of the goodness of their hearts, and they didn't have to do it, that would be the only incentive is to try to get to the credit program. And I'm hard pressed to see that they would save enough money to pay for it over the life of the, of the site.
Going to get a better tax about the amortizing and capitalized cost, whatever it is.
So they're gonna do that.
One.
They still do that.
Yeah.
They get a double, I mean, if they get a credit. They get to, they get to advertise their costs, and then they get a rate reduction, like what's really a tax, so. It's not one or the other.
Right. So moving on, on page.
I'm on page eighty-nine up here, unless you're going there.
That's where I'm going next.
Okay, and I'll wait.
Okay. So we also included some comparisons of credits, just thought it'd be good to, to check that out. So we looked at some of the same jurisdictions that we, that FCS Group looked at, you know, comparing rates. So as you can see, we kind of, we grouped them into the top four, don't have any kind of, they don't have a credit program at all. And then the, the middle group goes from roughly ten percent to fifty percent. And then our proposed change along with our single-family rate is listed. And then DuPont says a little bit higher, but it only applies to certain vacant land.
This is residential, though, right?
Correct, and so, well, this is just, we, we put in our residential equivalent rate just to show, and then also put in everybody else's, just to, just to see where we, where we stand. So you can see the range goes from basically ten to sixty-seven percent. And we're proposing forty-three, which is still on the higher side of what's offered, and some don't offer it at all.
What I didn't understand about the table, when I compared the two tables here, that most of the places that you up there indicated a range of credits. What proposed for Lakewood is not a range, it's a forty-three percent credit. In, in, in other words. Well, you're you're, in 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 other words, currently we have a range of ten to eighty-five.
Actually, there are, there are a few others in the ordinance, the only, but we've mainly been talking about the forty-three because it's the high end. So it actually does drop, um, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but it's in the ordinance. We had also adjusted the ones that we have for, if somebody did build a detention or retention system, there's lesser amounts for those. I think it drops as low as maybe like eighteen percent. That's in the ordinance, not in this information.
So you you're you're proposing that our current eighty-five percent credit go to forty-three?
Correct.
What are you proposing for our current sixty-two percent credit?
Yeah, well, that would go to thirty-one, for example. It'd just be cut in half because it's roughly a fifty percent reduction. So what's shown in the ordinance, so we've got a few strange ones that in terms of the percentages. And the reason that is, is a number of parcels, their credit has been prorated. Not to get too much into the weeds, but like Pierce College, for example, because only part of their system meets our current standards, you know, because they, as they've developed, they've built new systems. And so that portion of their property meets the eighty-five percent. So their whole parcel gets like a twenty-one percent credit because it's still only one parcel of land.
Is it their D deck for putting in a lot of like?
Well, that was the sewers, that's different. Well, I guess they do, their storm does go down there, but, well, because they've actually disconnected a lot of their systems that they've constructed, so they're infiltrating more on site now, so that's one reason. And then all their systems that they built, you know, meet current qua- water quality standards, so they have a prorated credit. So does Technical College and Western State as a couple of examples.
So so you would envision someone getting a ten percent credit would only get a five percent credit?
Well, the ten percent we're actually recommend go to zero over, it it, we're recommending either goes away now. Or it goes to zero over a five-year period, which we'll talk more about. Because most of the ten percent ones are very small, the credit amount is very small.
Twenty-two seventy-seven?
Yeah, the total credit amount is is like twenty-two hundred dollars. So that's not much in the scheme of things compared to three hundred. Yeah, and three hundred and fourteen thousand total, so we were proposing to eliminate the ones that are getting the ten percent credit.
How much does it cost just to keep that?
Yeah, that's why we're eliminating the ten percent credit, because most of them would get like a seven dollar credit or something. I mean, you know, it takes more time than that to think about it, so.
Just to ask a sort of an off-the-wall question here.
Sure.
Which you, it's never stopped me before, sir, and this is the first time you and I have talked in this this environment. And you'll hear me say things to my colleagues like, shut up. You said it, the eighty-five credit rate would drop to forty-three percent, you said you called that a reduction. Is it also fair to say that if you turn that around, that's a tax increase to the property owner?
I would, if you don't mind, I'd like to.
Go ahead, I mean, I'm just, this is just spitballing here, but.
Okay.
I heard that used in that public hearing, and I I want to nail this down before I start thinking about which option we want to follow.
I'm not sure how much of my background you're aware of, but I've spent thirty-two years in water resources. I've run storm water utilities, I've been involved in water sewer and wastewater, excuse me, water, wastewater and storm water utilities. The first point I would make is being really clear, this is not a tax, this is a fee for service. It's an important consideration because taxes are viewed differently, fees for services by the course are viewed entirely differently. Including about rate equity, making sure that people in the same rate category are treated exactly the same.
Alright.
So your your question, if I may just kind of rephrase that for you is, for those individuals who are currently seeing a credit of eighty-five percent. Now they're going to see an increase in their storm water fee.
Right.
And the answer is yes. But when you do an assessment of the the benefits to the entire rate structure and all the people. They have been essentially been receiving too high of a credit for the value and benefit that they have, that that we receive from them having storm water on their site. So they have been getting a higher credit that has been absorbed by all the rest of the utility rate payers in order to accomplish the same level of work.
Let's follow up on that.
Okay.
Because the second half of the stuff I heard here the other night was, this is a good way to disincentive businesses from coming into Lakewood. How do we, how do we confront that question?
It's very simple, it's a good question, but it's a very simple answer, which is, hmm, everybody has to follow the same standards and rules. We're all operating under our N P D S permits, we're all all operating under the same engineering standards that require us. It doesn't matter, in fact, to some degree, it kind of does matter if you're a phase one jurisdiction like Seattle or Tacoma, real close to home. Or if you're Department of Transportation, because what they have to do is a little bit more than what we have to do as a phase two. So e- essentially, our storm water rates are, can be lower than a phase one jurisdiction. Because we're not having to cover the same um activities that they have to under their permit. Across the board, though, is it cheaper to do work here in Lakewood versus in university places versus in Furtress versus in any other small jurisdiction like Charlotte or Sundown? The answer is, on the storm water, no. It's not, it's not any more expensive, it's not any cheaper. We have better soils, so their storm water controls on site should cost them less than if they're working up in my former jurisdiction, Bellevue. Where it's really tight soils and they have to build really large detention ponds, which are very expensive, take up half of their parking lot, okay? Um, vaults are very expensive, infiltration is very, very cost effective. So Lakewood has that advantage of being able to have people take a very small part of the property and put infiltration in. Or even with the right engineering, put it underneath their parking lots. So that they can still get the dual function of their land by parking on it, can't put a building on it, but you can park on it. Does that help? Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Okay. Are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm thinking some more, I mean, I, first of all, I appreciate the answer because I think I understood just by the word you said, so I appreciate the clarification. But I want to sit here, I just want to think about what you said, because there's 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 still something niggling, but I want to, at the back of my mind, but Paul, you go ahead and ask yours.
Would we allow, back to Woodbrook, let's say there were two, two uh facilities going in at the same time? Would we allow them to co-co-build a detention facility?
Could they jointly build a facility?
What are you, are you referring to like where the school is, for example, or something else?
Well, I, well, we could, a- actually, let's say.
Like a regional system?
Guys are building a huge one.
Yeah.
The guys next door said, we're ready to go to. We've got a road network, we're gonna do this, we're gonna share an entrance or do something, and we want to share.
I can't, I can't speak to Lakewood, but I will tell you that it happens that way in many different jurisdictions without too much trouble. As long as you have the legal agreements in place that we know who to go after if they're not maintaining the system properly.
I I would just, I would just say.
Yeah.
The more complicated you make the rate structure, the more open it is to legal challenges, like, which you didn't say legal challenges, but. When you started having, the the Pierce County, for instance, had seven, I think, it might have been more, different. Surface water areas, they had.
Yes.
Seven different rates.
Okay.
Basically, they went from thirty dollars or forty dollars in one part of the county to a hundred and something over a parkland. And it became more and more difficult to do that. And 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 the numbers showed the part of the people were really literally paying for everybody.
That was. That was a council decision, I worked for Pierce County at that time.
You did.
Yeah, the water programs.
And the council changed their.
They wanted to have specific to their air, those areas.
Bas- basins is what they call them, it's depending on the type of projects they have in that basin, why they charge a different.
When it finally collapsed, they actually had to account for each area.
It was a nightmare.
And when it finally collapsed, the Parkland, the Surface Water Management Fund had a big fund balance. And they, the one that had Parkland Spanaway and Clover Creek, I think it was, had the entire fund balance. So because the other guys were only paying thirty bucks a year, and if they did one major project and it was a hundred thousand dollars, they wiped the fund down, they had to borrow.
So what's the uh backup, what's the methodology for the division or differential in rates between single-family residences and commercial properties?
Yeah, so our single-family residence is just based on a, there's a equivalent residential unit that, and again, I think we use what the county had. I believe it's like, it's X number of square foot of impervious surface, and it's just a flat rate. So for single-family, it's all the same regardless of the size of the house uh or the property. For commercial, it's based on the amount of impervious surface, both building, pavement, and then gravel is like seventy-five percent.
Do we base that off a cumulative total of single-family residents' impervious surface, or is it just something that's inherited? How do we know that allocation?
Yes.
Fair between commercial and.
Yeah, it it's, there it's, there is a standard in, because I know F C S group looked at ours and said, yeah, it's it's still relevant as far as the number. So I think it's just kind of, you know, common practice as far as what your average single-family property would have in terms of impervious surface. And that's the number that we use, and I can't tell you what it is off the cuff.
That number does vary a little bit by jurisdiction, because if you have a jurisdiction that has a lot of really small lots. So their single-family residential equivalent can be twenty-two hundred square feet. Another location maybe twenty-five hundred, another one maybe twenty-seven hundred. But they're all within a fairly narrow range. And then what you do is you say, this is what our single-family residential equivalent base is. Then you apply that to the commercial properties, and you figure out how many single-family residential equivalent units there are, and then you charge accordingly. Some places take the single family and they actually have different categories of single family. That's what Bellevue had, and they're looking to simplify that because it made the actual billing process and the verif- checks and balances and verification very complicated. Took a lot of staff time, a lot, took a lot of money. Most jurisdictions, I think, for the most part, just say, single family is a single family. We're gonna assume that the average is X number of square feet of impervious surface. You're gonna have some that are gonna fall below that, some that are gonna be above that, but it's not worth the time to try and break it down into different categories. And then you take that unit and you multiply it times how many of those units are already commercial, and that's where you develop their their costs typically. Does that answer your question? Yeah, thanks. Uh, by the way, if I'm going on too much, giving too much detail, please let me know.
Again, another question. Oh crap, he's back. Alright, now I understood, when I came, when we started this discussion, I was thinking, this sounded a lot like an indirect tax. You have persuaded me by your argument that it's not, that it's a fee applied extraordinarily across the world of surface water management. So then, what's the difference besides the number of words between options two and three?
You want to tackle that one?
Are you talking about on page?
Because I'm talking page uh ninety. Which I suspect is what you gentlemen are gonna want before you leave this table tonight, is what is your, our direction to you?
Are you talking about option two and three or one and two?
No, sir, two and three, one is, as far as I'm concerned, is off the table.
There's not a lot of difference between, if I may, quick, one and three, the difference between one and three is three says after five years it drops, it's a cliff, goes straight to forty-three.
Right.
Okay, the other one goes on forever.
Right.
Option two.
Yeah.
Is where we said, based on what we heard, there should be a time where it's a gradual decrease from the eighty-five percent down to the forty-three percent. And we picked five years because we were hearing about five, six years, someone saying, I need that amount of time to kind of do some cost recovery. And we looked over five years and said, five years seems like a reasonable number, five years, Pierce County, excuse me, ten years, we could go six years. But it was to show you in order of magnitude, if we started off at eighty-five percent in nineteen, or twenty nineteen, or started right away in reduction in twenty nineteen. But in five years, this is the way, one way we propose to get down to the forty-three percent. And if you do that, in each one of them, we tried to show you what the um reduced revenue collection to the storm water utility would be under each one of those options.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Sorry, no, that's good. So we, I know we're kind of jumping around, getting a lot of good, good questions. So just to, back on to page eighty-nine at the bottom, um, just to reiterate that there's currently a hundred and nineteen properties that are getting a credit. And for the most part, you know, most of them are pretty sizable because there's a little bit of work involved obviously to get the credit. So it's the Walmarts and the, you know, Western State Hospital, the Tech College, et cetera, those are the ones that are, that are getting the credit currently. Um, and just as a reminder, we've got about sixteen thousand seven hundred parcels in Lakewood, so it's a very small percentage that are actually getting the credit. So then on to page ninety, uh, again, we had the three options to leave the program in place as it exists at the maximum of eighty-five percent. The currently, the the savings to the the property owners, a hundred and nineteen property owners is about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per year. That would jump to about four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars with a with a rate increase. And so we're talking two point three million dollars, you know, over five years, that's the value there. Second option again would be to reduce the the current rates over a period of five years. And the third option is to leave the rates as they are for five years and then reduce them in the sixth year down to the forty-three percent. And the the numbers there, we uh just tried to at least put in words and numbers, um, what that would look like in terms of the reduced revenue.
The option two and three. Do we know the impact and what what programs will lose if we choose those two programs?
Well, I would think the, kind of the low hanging fruit is capital projects, because that's the stuff that, I mean, those, you know, that's what we kept adding and subtracting when we were looking at the, at the different rates. So that would be, I guess, would be our recommendation.
It would affect our ability to build the swim capital, but also to participate wholly in the transportation of capital projects for contributions.
Mr. Whaler. Trying to get my head around uh our work on the swim fee increase vis a vis the credit decrease. So would it be fair to say if we looked at option two? And we had a lesser reduced revenue as a result? Would we have to raise the swim fee as high as we indicated we were inclined to do to get to the same point? Because we're raising the swim fee on people's bills to recapture, what, about a million bucks in annual revenue due to bond over a course of time?
Right, so you're talking about raising it to sixty percent to make up for the credit?
You kind of wonder, you know, if you can step down the credit like option two might provide, would we have to increase the swim fees as much as we're proposing to do it? To get to the same level of revenue over time to do what we need to do to bond the projects?
The swim fee, um, assumed that you would start off at a forty-three percent credit. You would instantly, you'd do basically option three but right away. So.
Okay.
When you go to option two, what it means is, is that staying at the fifty percent, not changing that. It just means that the amount that we would collect over five years would be.
So this is already assuming fifty percent?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 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 alright, already built that.
It's already built in.
Yeah. It's unfortunate.
We would have a reduced collection over five years of option two in, can you remind me?
That's right.
Talking about that.
Option two was.
Yeah, I mean, it's, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I had to put these on.
Yeah, and I had to.
So over five years, it would basically mean with option two, we would have approximately six hundred thousand dollars less over five years. So that's, you know, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Certainly something that, well, I would like to have the money, I think we would, in order to do the work. It's something that we could absorb and we'll just probably prioritize, and maybe on some transportation projects, we have to ask for a little bit more in grant funds.
Well, option two is best of course, isn't it?
Option two is best if we're going to do any kind of, any kind of, keep the eighty-five percent for a period of time and then ratchet it down. If you were to take the eighty-five percent and do it over ten years instead of five years, um, that means that we would, we would have an even greater reduction in the revenue stream coming in.
So in nineteen, the rate would be seventy-something percent?
Well, what we, what we could do is, starting in nineteen, keep it at eighty-five, in twenty-twenty, drop to the next tier, and so on, and so on. It depends on how you want to go about it. Do you want to use twenty-eighteen as your first year?
And is the goal to get a first drop down?
Yeah.
Is that the goal?
Well, it goes, it goes to forty-three, for the ones that are at eighty-five. The only ones that we're proposing go to zero would be the ones at ten percent.
Yeah.
And they would drop again incrementally over the five-year period until they were at zero.
Do we, do we have a spreadsheet or chart that shows us what that, how that would impact the programs where the cutoff would change?
We, we don't have a spreadsheet for that.
What?
I guess in two years, when we did the budget again, raise rates, probably would necessitate raising rates higher.
So you could delay, you could delay some work. So if you're considering this, then having a step down, option two, especially if you started option two with your first reduction in twenty nineteen, that actually reduced the five hundred and ninety thousand dollar shortfall, if you, less revenue, because we anticipated.
Okay.
So you would be even less than five hundred and ninety thousand.
Well, actually, I did, it was reduced first year.
Oh, first year.
Yeah, so that is taken into account.
So we just either have to borrow or?
And it'd be about a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand a year for that five-year period, less, averaging it over that time.
Average over five years.
So it's not a huge sum of money.
Yeah, I, I, I still, maybe it's not having. You're being associated with government, not being a career insider, that causes me to have concern that we still can't admit that this is a tax. Because here's, here's, here's a distinguishing factor. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the step down and changing it, but you take a public water system, a gas utility, electricity, sewer, telephone, and cable, those are utilities. Ratepayers pay for those things. They're all created by man. Stormwater is a general government function. It's here before man, it comes out of the sky, and we, we choose to collectively manage it as a government. That's a general government function. And so when you're charging somebody for a general government function, it's fundamentally a tax, even if you call it a fee. But Washington state statute says it's a utility, it's a fiction.
We could have a long conversation about that.
It is, it is a total fiction, because it came out of the sky, and it did not come in a pipe to my house.
Pierce County had a Supreme Court decision that it was a utility, fee for service, and not a tax, and I'm standing by that.
Well, that's, that's a legal fiction created by the legislature.
So be it.
The legislature. Well, you know, certainly the one, you know, the dollars pieces are fine, that, that, the advantage of, to me, the advantage of option two over option three is, if we use option three, then five years from now, we hear the same arguments we heard a week ago, that I'm suddenly getting a huge change.
Right.
So that's, that's why option two, however many years you put into the equation, is a better thing to do that, and everybody in the city's rates are going to change in twenty nineteen, so it's better to use twenty eighteen as the base year, and make the twenty, first twenty percent adjustment to twenty nineteen. But my, one question was, a new piece of new construction in twenty nineteen, that is the maximum credit for a piece of new construction, we're going to start off at forty-three.
Correct.
So that, you, you know, even if you've got an equivalent system to somebody who's today at eighty-five, and you do that, you're starting at forty-three, because you, that's just your initial base rate, and it's going to stay the same, and, and, and we'll be doing that. So I'm certainly willing to take a look at, at option two, the a hundred thousand and change a year, that is, as long as we continue to have a magician in the city manager's chair, we're, we're fine.
And, and not watch his tricks.
It's just, I mean, I, just, I agree with what my colleagues have said about option two, but I just want to, I just want to, again, play a little devil's advocate here with about option three. When I hear one hundred and ten thousand dollars reduction, now I realize that that's not a lot, and I realize the city manager and his staff do a very good job of managing the budget, it's still a reduction. And therefore, to play the devil's advocate, I would say, well, if we adopted option three, which leaves rates as they are for five years, and then down to forty-three percent, does that give the city the opportunity to realign what it needs to do with its grant writing projects and its funding for the sources that that swim money is used for? We've been thinking about the business sector, what about the city's budget? Because if there's one thing I've learned here in the last four-plus years, budgets are a moving target. You can't predict them, and they're going to turn out exactly as you think they are. Mightn't we be better served in leaving things as they are for five years, and then the drop-off that option three suggests?
Actually, I would say that from a utility perspective, and for funding certainty, we would be better going straight to the forty-three percent credit program, and having confidence that we're going to recover that money, which we are not going to recover eighty-five percent. And therefore, we can, we can now use that money as a part of our capital program, whether it be match money or directly to projects, individual projects. As you can see from the analysis that Greg did, at least four jurisdictions have looked at the credit program, and made a determination that it didn't make any sense, that they weren't getting any value out of the onsite work from the overall systems.
All right.
Others have determined that there's different levels of credit, not having gone through that with them. I do know that FCS group, when they did the city of Lakewood's assessment, they're also the same ones that did Pierce County. And Pierce County, because it's a much bigger system, different impervious surfaces, the exact same analysis, they ended up with closer to the thirty percent credit, and that's what, that's what Pierce County is adopting.
So this is what we've got here tonight, a fairly conservative approach to this whole idea. Because if we wanted to go all the way over, we could say zero percent.
Exactly right.
And be done with it, and move forward.
And you would have justification based on, on an analysis, I think that we could support that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, are we okay?
So then, applying the same step-down process to properties that we have essentially given a one-hundred percent credit to by exempting them, is why would we not want to do that in the same way, where we have primarily churches, but some other organizations, organizations that are essentially getting a hundred percent credit now?
Yeah.
Why not step that down in the same way? And, and, and instead of calling one a credit and one an exemption, they're both really credits.
Do you mind?
You want to?
Okay.
Sure, please.
Maybe which don't have systems.
Right.
They just run on.
The idea of giving nonprofit groups an exemption is very rare. Greg did a little bit of searching with those same organizations, and he found no one other than Pierce County, and I think it was Edgewood, because they based theirs on, on Pierce County, actually gives an exemption, an outright exemption for nonprofits. I've had a conversation with, with our legal counsel, and in generalities, I think it's something we need to look at very carefully, because one of the things about being an enterprise utility is the obligation to treat all parcels within rate classifications the same. And if you have a parcel here, regardless of who owns it, and a parcel here, regardless of who owns it, and they look exactly the same, and one you're charging, and one you're not, then there's a disparity on how you're applying your utility rates. I think that's something we need to look at very carefully. Pierce County has done it, Lakewood adopted Pierce County's code, this is an artifact of adopting an older code. The current look at it by FCS group, from what I recall, said, you really ought to consider not giving an exemption for religious organizations and others, and nonprofits, because they are exactly the same as the parcel next door, and you could potentially run into some challenges on your code.
Well, I understand the suggestion that parcels look the same, that what is not the same is how they've historically been treated, which is something that has gone on for twenty-some years. And I, and I would suggest that I would like to get them to zero, okay, or to identical of, of, of things that are there, if they happen to be a, a, a nonprofit that has a system that would get them to an exemption rate, they'd like to get them to the exemption rate rather than being totally exempt. But nonprofits, like for-profit businesses, it's a challenge to make a significant change all at once into what has become a anticipated element of your budget. And so having some sort of a step down from the one-hundred percent to, to no, to no, no exemption at all makes sense for the same reasons that business owners point out to us, and that we're amenable to. So I, you know, I'd kind of like to see something, so it doesn't necessarily have to be five years and twenty percent, it could be three years and thirty-three, or, or something, but not just one big step down. And maybe it can be based on, I don't know whether you want, again, not, not making it too crowded by tearing it and saying, well, big nonprofits need to get a step down, but small nonprofits don't, goes on and on. I think just applying the same formula that we're applying to other folks that are having their level of exemption adjusted, seems, would seem to make sense to me, rather than treating them differently.
I'd like, I also, I'd like to see a proposal for a step down, some phase out of nonprofit, and see what the financial impact is at the same time. I look at it as a vestige, it predates the city, it reminds me of when I practiced law in Guam, between eighteen ninety-eight and nineteen fifty, Guam was ruled by the United States Navy under regulations, they then passed the Organic Act, so they had no statutes. So there were more lawyers on Guam, probably half dozen at the time, from California than anywhere else. They adopted the entire California Civil Code, and then over the years that followed, and I was there thirty years later, they weeded them out, and they went along, well, that doesn't make any sense, why do we do that? Oh, that, that, that was about something about farm country, and it doesn't apply here, so they, they kept, it was just a massive vestige statutes. And so I, I can see, counsel, here, we need a fee schedule, we're starting up, we're, we're operating under Pierce County's, we'll just take all Pierce County's stuff that, to start out with, and we'll fix it as we go. We can certainly come back with a modification that takes the exempt parcels, and does exactly that, tears it in. I would propose we do it over five years, just like we're proposing for the step down on the credit program. So the, the first year, they would get an eighty percent, and then sixty, forty, thirty, or twenty, and then down to zero. It, it, it makes things easy if everything's based on the same timeframe, if that's what you'd like us to, to do. Can I ask a question? What year were you in Guam, what years?
Seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one.
I was there sixty-five to seventy-one, I was a little young kid at that time, I didn't fucking practice any law.
You know, and the disparity here, I mean, you know, we, funny, I have a picture on my wall of Mayor Doug Richardson, when I was chair of the Goodwill Board, and we cut the ribbon on the Goodwill store here, that's an lease facility, so they don't own their parking lot. So they're a nonprofit, but the stormwater fee is passed through to them as part of their triple-net lease in that location. Somebody else might own their building, and there's a discrepancy.
So are we ready?
It'll get an exemption.
What?
It'll get an exemption.
No, because the property is all owned by.
They're not the property owner.
They aren't the property owner, they're, they're a triple-net lessee.
So are they, are we ready to vote on this next week, or do you care to go over?
I think we can move forward on this, and add the other one later, perhaps, if we want to.
I mean, if you, if you, if they adjust it to option two, and add the pieces about the, the nonprofits, that, that's easy to change in the text for the copy that's on the agenda.
The fiscal impact on option two has been presented to you tonight. The impacts on the exemption, right now, what Greg's shared with me is that with the fifty percent rate increase, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on the exemption that we're giving up every year. So take twenty percent of that, and that's what we capture the first year, forty percent of that we capture the second year, sixty percent, and so on. So that's, it, it's revenue coming in, so it's going to be a positive net benefit, and actually, it may work out fairly well if we're doing the step down here, and we're stepping this up here, it, it, it would help offset the costs. So we're going to lose a hundred and twenty here, but we're going to pick up twenty thousand there, or twenty, twenty-eight thousand there, so it helps.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
We already count that into the exemptions we're entirely. And there's, and, and there's also a little bit of mitigation to the step, to, to, to doing all that, because the rate is going up anyway, so even though your exemption, you've got an exemption with the, with the, it's still your exemption, your percentage is based on the rate for that year, which is going to go up each year with the, with the escalation provision, that we, I think we, it's going to be two and a half percent.
Okay. I think we have a consensus, and move forward.
So we'll plan to come back with a ordinance with those changes, and?
I think it would be good to see that.
So do you want to plan to vote on it next week, or do you want more time to look at it?
I don't think we need more time to look at it, we've looked at it a couple times there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of expected a flowchart.
I do, too.
See, the items tend to be scheduled for next week, we move to comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Just a few updates for you, just a friendly reminder, next Monday, six-thirty, you'll have a special meeting to do a walkthrough, talk-through of the new audiovisual, audiovisual infrastructure that we have here in, in, in the council chambers. You may have, actually, I think you're all aware that former mayor, longtime council member Claudia Thomas, suddenly passed away on, on Saturday night. We've been in contact with her, with her family, we've already put together a news release run up by her family, so they've okayed it, so we're going to put something out on behalf of the city, and we've got a quote from the mayor there representing the council. Tentatively, the family is looking at Saturday, June second, for some type of a memorial event, followed by a celebratory event, that was something that she, that, that, that she wanted. So looking at perhaps the memorial event at Four Heroes Elementary School, and then the celebratory event following afterwards at the McGavick Center. However, that is still very, very tentative, but I would just ask that you, if you can, mark, mark your calendars for, for that date, and certainly, as more information becomes available, we'll let you know.
June second.
Saturday. This morning, our team, we met to review opportunities for Lakewood as it relates to what was formerly the Tiger Program, which is now the Build Program, and I think I've briefed this body before, the good news is Congress appropriated one point five billion dollars in support of this program, infrastructure program for transportation projects, which is three times the amount that had previously been appropriated, going back about the last six or, six or seven years. However, the downside is that the administration, which writes the rules on how the dollars can be used, and this, that, and the other thing, are somewhat convoluted. For example, we only have until July nineteenth to submit an application, and that is not enough time. That is not enough time for us to pull together what is needed. I've done a Tiger Grant application myself, and it took eight- I've done a Tiger Grant application myself and it took eight months and took the dedicated staff resources of about, you know, seven or eight people on a fairly regular basis, plus some outside consulting to do the high-end economic analysis that would that would need to be done. It's just it's a very, very competitive program. This particular program has, I think, in the in the short, this year for this round, some hurdles that we're not going to be able to overcome. One is just the timeline. The other is the match. The good news is that if we wanted to apply for five million or two million or ten million, as opposed to in the past, it was a minimum application of twenty-five million, we can't. That's right in our bailiwick. Also, you know, local projects are encouraged to apply. You know, we've had conversations with Senator Murray's office on that, and that was the intent of expanding the program. Thirty percent of the program nationwide is allocated for rural programs, which is a higher a higher allocation from a percentage standpoint than than previous years. Also, only a hundred and fifty billion, well, not only, but a hundred and fifty million is the maximum amount that can go to one state. So if you look at Washington State, which has been very, very successful in getting Tiger Grants, that gets eaten up very, very quickly. But if, again, if we're shooting for five or seven or even ten million, you know, I think we're I think I think we're definitely at the at at the table. The key is the match, you know, twenty twenty percent. And what the rules say is that agencies cannot use any revenue that was put in place prior to January first of two thousand fifteen. That's basically just about everything that we have, with the exception of TBD money and maybe some grants that we have recently received or are gonna receive in the future. Even if we wanted to bond it, we can't use bond revenue. You can use tax increment financing, but we're one of two states that doesn't have it. But maybe in the future when we have the military benefits zone. So again, you know, some high hurdles. So long story short, we're gonna do two things. One is we're gonna continue to work on our delegation on what Congress needs to put in in terms of what the rules should be, which is, hey, how about, like any other federal grant or state grant, we play by the same rules, which is, for example, a local match? You know, that's our decision, you know, in terms of where that funding is gonna come from. But in the meantime, what we're gonna do is we're going to evaluate a number of projects that we think could compete. We're presuming that this program is gonna get reinstated again next year. And so then this time next year, we'll be in a much better position to be able to submit an application. You know, some of the projects that we're looking at, and this is just, we're just throwing things up against the wall right now. You know, Silicon Boulevard, or at least a good portion of Silicon Boulevard, Washington Boulevard, Veterans Boulevard, Veterans Drive, of which we have some connecting Washington monies to be able to do sidewalks, not just on one side, but on two side, two sides. Also, some of the projects that are coming out of the downtown subarea plan, though we might not be ready for those in the upcoming year, but as we look out two, three, or four years, certainly those could be some projects as well. So we do think we have some, you know, some some viable projects. And so we just wanna take our time and go through that. And of course, we'll bring that back to you and keep you posted, keep you posted on that. But the kicker is when we're talking with the delegation is for Congress to essentially write the rules on how the application process should go about and things along those lines. A couple of major projects going on, I think everybody's aware, you know, Silicon Boulevard projects. We've got some detours set up. The paving is gonna occur between eighty-eighth and Ardmore this week. And also, we've got traffic signal improvements occurring at several other intersections along along that corridor. So, you know, we can expect some delays out there. Our communications manager and our public works department are doing a good job in, you know, keeping folks informed via social media. Also, the Gravel Lake Drive non-motorized project kicks off, actually kicked off today. They're out there doing some work. And matter of fact, tomorrow evening at four-thirty to six-thirty, gonna be having a neighborhood meeting for folks who wanna come in and learn about the projects and the impacts like that. Do want to point out that all the work on that project is occurring within the public right-of-way. So as I think you're all aware, we didn't have to acquire any private property. So all the work will be occurring in the private right-of-way, in the public right-of-way, including, you know, removing some trees and things, things along those lines. Though our project manager did walk with the with the with the contractor last week and so he might have seen some some-
Trees.
Pink, some 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 pink markings up there. So he had the plans and so he pulled off a number as well. So he was able to save a number of trees as well. So some good news there. Want to want to save our trees.
You're gonna hear squealing.
About keeping the trees or taking the trees down?
Oh, people don't realize the trees are coming down.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot over by Madera, right?
There's a whole row.
The whole row.
Are they still coming down? Because there was a comment that those-
If it's got a mark, if it's got a, if today, if you saw today, the last couple of days.
It's like somebody who's lived there for twenty years and has that row of trees shielding them five feet from their fence is gonna lose the whole. His name's Hamilton.
Also, some of the lower old bushes are gonna get trimmed up. You know, I've asked them not to, just to, not don't go too deep because that'll that'll open things up. And we wanna try and preserve people's privacies as well because that's why they're there. The good news is, you know, over time, it does grow back in. But some of them are infringing on the right-of-way and in order to put the sidewalks in and the streetlights and such, we are gonna have to trim backs into those areas.
I noticed we still have the local access only sign there.
Yeah, we're trying to manage expectations in terms of, sometimes the contractor gets out a little ahead of us on that, but we're trying to minimize, you know, traffic flow through there as 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 well.
If you live in Lakewood, you can go there. If you live in U T.
Local access.
Good. Here's a way around.
Well, the people on Interlocken are concerned that that means everybody's gonna be diverted down Interlocken, the length of Interlocken to the bridge to go across because they're not supposed to use Gravel Lake Drive.
Hey, just go.
Easier ways to go around.
Might have to, might have to improve that eventually.
Every time you need a road project, you gotta-
We just take the bridge down, make it a fishing.
So the, say no to plant panhandling and contribute to the solution, save your change. Signs have gone up. So I think we've had almost thirty-five thousand repostings on Facebook on that. That by far has been the number one, I don't, I think ever since-
Yeah, just glad it surpassed the art.
So social media.
It surpassed the art.
So I do want to commend communications manager Bryn Grimley, who has been literally working twenty-four seven and responding to people's comments and both publicly and then also when people, you know, they they, what do they call it? Private message or they message the city's Facebook account? So she's been up-
And if that crisscross on you, you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, exactly.
So, well, we were, we actually, Mayor, with all due respect to the TNT, we knew we were doing the right thing when we came up with this idea.
I know, but it's validation.
You're my validation.
That's conversion validation.
Lakewood Police Department, once again, is gonna be holding some free boating classes for for folks and they're scheduled for Saturdays, May nineteenth, June second, and June, June twenty-third over at the police station. And we just suggest that people register and you can register online through our Parks and Recreation Systems. Chambers Creek Canyon, you know, we continue to work with Pierce County and University Place on this. One of the, over right before, actually, over Labor Day weekend, I'm sorry, over Memorial Day weekend, the city is gonna be working with the Washington Trails Association to lead some volunteer folks down there and do some trailhead improvements and do some cleanup down there. And so it's gonna be occurring from eight-thirty to three-thirty, eight-thirty in the morning to three-thirty in the afternoon on Friday, the twenty-fifth, and then Saturday and Sunday, the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. And we have some links on, if you wanna sign up and volunteer and go down there, I'll make sure that you folks get that. We continue, we are actually close to finalizing transitioning to the state's business licensing system. And I do want to say that the Department of Revenue has been extremely complimentary of our city team as well as our infrastructure, the the electronic databases that we have. And they have commented that we have been one of the quote-unquote easiest cities to go through the process. And later this week, we're gonna be sending out notifications to our current licensees, you know, regarding the partnership and the next time that they license, they'll have to go through the state BLS. Of course, we're gonna have it all on our our website and everything. But basically, long story short, we expect to go live on the first part of June. We're looking at June seventh or so, so that's moving along. Lauren, you probably asked, if you didn't hear this, so the city of Seattle implemented a, not a five-hundred-dollar head tax per employee, but a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar one. So our economic development manager and I and some others, we were talking. So we're gonna think about doing some kind of an outreach to Seattle businesses.
Could we, now, I'm I'm serious about this. It's off, it's off, a little off. Could we offer a per-employee incentive for the first year for a new business?
Tax deduction.
A tax, no, a tax rebate of some site. It's like we'll give you a hundred bucks per employee for the first year for a new new business coming to Lakewood.
We're gonna be at the money fountain. Rebate from what?
Yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be a rebate from a from a tax that we're currently collecting because otherwise it would be a gift to public funds. But but, you know, you could give them a rebate on property tax or property tax.
Just the fact, just the fact, I don't, I don't think, it 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 takes so long to to ramp up anything that's significant. It could even be for the remainder of two thousand eighteen, but in contrast to Seattle, it would be a good PR move. That just shows how business-friendly we are. We'll even, we'll even give you a hit.
Put an ad in the daytime that would be funny.
You 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 can re- you can rebate two and a half percent of their utility tax for electricity. Because they're they're paying, well, they're paying five percent.
You could say get a head with no, you know, tax. We need to make it for publicity. We'd have to make it per per head. New job, FTEs. FTEs in your business, working, we'll give you this.
We are the true headhunters.
Head, this is headhunter. But I mean, it'd be such a contrast that you can get press on it. At least statewide.
You know, it only takes-
And because we're trying to, we're trying to suck some of those people out of there.
By the way, it only takes three or four businesses, right? I mean, good-sized businesses to have an impact in Lakewood.
Exactly.
Yeah, so if they had twenty employees each, it'd be great.
Yeah, that's right. We'll report back to you.
I hope you design the ad. Don't worry, it's meant to be.
And you can do it for for for-
Businesses that have at least twenty employees.
What's the budget for our work? And art.
You know, I just want to be clear, it's you folks who are dragging on my report here. I just wanted to, so. Next, next Monday, and I'm sorry, not next Monday. At your next study session, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, May twenty-seventh, one of the agenda items is to give you an update on the two thousand and nineteen Comp Plan Amendment Schedule. So long story short, what we're looking at is kicking it off on September first, two thousand and eighteen. So a few months allow people about thirty days to, we wanna privately initiate a Comp Plan Amendment. It would then process through the Planning Commission. It would come to the city council in terms of what the privately initiated ones are, what the publicly initiated ones are, what the ones the council, the planning commission want to initiate. And then we would go through the whole process and it would probably take us through June, July, August of of next year. So it's about a twelve-month, about a twelve-month process. Certainly, at the staff level, you can expect some suggestions and or recommendations in regards of things that, you know, maybe the the council can undertake, including some potential Comp Plan Amendments down in the down in the Woodbrook area. The other is looking at prohibiting used car auto sales as well as adopting new standards for used car auto sales in our NC-two zones, C-one and C-two zoning districts, which quite frankly, we don't believe is appropriate, is not appropriate for auto sales. And there's a place for them, and there's a place not for them. So, but it would go through a process, but I would just ask that you think about that.
Is that city-initiated?
We would, we would, we would recommend that it would be city council-initiated. That's correct, that's correct. So, and by the way, businesses within those zones, if that was to pass, they would be allowed to stay, of less. It's just that they would be, they would be-
Phase down.
Non-conforming. Yeah, they would phase out over time. That's correct. We are, we're seeing them bubble up in areas that-
Fill those pockets.
We don't think is appropriate. We don't think is appropriate for that type of activity as we look out into the future of Lakewood.
I agree.
And then as far as your calendar goes, this Wednesday evening, Greater Lakes is having their anniversary celebration. So five-thirty to appetizers and stuff, five-thirty, and then they have a program about about seven o'clock or so. It's Wednesday.
I didn't sign up for that yet. It's too late to do that?
If you wanna let us know, if you wanna, we can, we can RSVP on your-
And I'll pay you, whatever, yeah. If you would, for me?
Is that five-thirty?
So what time is it?
Five-thirty.
Till when?
Usually usually goes, I think I usually get, I get out of there about eight or so.
Yeah, I got the Pierce College Board meeting at five.
I have to trust people once in a while. Then on Thursday morning is the SSMCP elected official council meeting down at Eagles Pride Golf Course. That's from seven-thirty to nine-thirty. And then on Saturday, a number of things happening on Saturday in the morning. Kicking off, working through the afternoon is the Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event over at American Lake Park. Also, JBLM is gonna be hosting Armed Services, Arms Forces Day. It'll be over on the McCord Field side. Entryway is in off of one-twelfth and South Tacoma Way there. And then that evening, Clover Park Technical College is having their seventy-fifth year gala event over at the McGavick Conference Center. And that'll take us, that'll take us through.
Seventy-fifth, that's Saturday?
This Saturday.
No, I'm saying you.
That also is that Joe Ethel requested that's to participate in the bladder, cancel bladder.
That was this, yeah, that was this weekend. Yeah, we 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 put that on social media. Yeah, I think it was Sunday, wasn't it Sunday? Saturday, Saturday.
I saw him as I was going to the park.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll go get him in a minute.
Any questions? Are you going to Clover Park then?
Yes. Can borrow your tux?
Yeah, sure. You're good. All right, council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I stated last week, I was attending a trustees conference. It was held at Clark's College. And it's interesting how I pay attention to what's happening in those cities in comparison to what happens here in Lakewood. And we have a lot to be thankful for. We don't fight with our neighbors like some of the other countries do, other cities do. And they're having a challenge with Oregon and Washington coming together to build their waterfrontage. It's been quite a challenge for them, so. I just thought, it just stood out to me because of what we go through and how we-
So that was at which college?
Uh, Clark College. So, right in.
Like there in Vancouver.
Vancouver, Washington, yes. And tonight I attended a school board meeting. They had a full audience. And they were all talking about the incident with Abby. And they said that our schools have a real issue with bullying. A lot of parents were there talking about that, that not just Hudlock, Hudlock is big, but Lakes and some of the other schools are having that same issue and they don't feel like they're being heard. So that was a big, and and I talked about, a little bit about our safety program with the housing inspection. And Mr. Shaper wanted me to assure that the council knew he appreciates the fact that we are not gonna make people homeless. So, just share.
Spoken. Well, I had that trip to, from my day job, to the Government Finance Officers Association Conference in St. Louis, Missouri. And it actually was very interesting and it kind of dovetailed with the remarks of Councilmember Moss. You you realize that we have so much growth in this area and so much more going on in a lot of these other areas and they're struggling and they struggle with pensions and various things like that. And there's a tremendous number of of things I don't go to because counties are poor or something. It'd be good to talk about pension, those type of things. So we are fortunate that that we are in a growing area of the country and we're able to get some, some issues down. So, it's interesting, so. It's Redford or?
Well, again, to piggyback on council members- Well, again, to piggyback on Councilmember Moss's remarks, um, um, I've been concerned about the situation with bullying in the community and, uh, and the discourse that is created that hasn't all been positive. Okay, I, I mean, I'm, I, I don't think that the school district has responded in a very transparent way. Uh, that they, their response has been defensive. Uh, I think that much of the discussion on social media, a very small percentage of it has been constructive.
Right.
In terms of what, what can you do to, uh, to, to be able to deal with it, uh, in the going on. And so, it's caused me to wonder in this environment as community leaders and engaging other community leaders. Is there a way to acknowledge that it's a problem here in our community, but exercise some leadership in a positive way that would move us towards some solutions? And I'm, this is not an area that I'm a practitioner in, so I'm not quite sure what that would look like. But I certainly would be interested if, uh, Mr. Bokey would ask the youth council if there are some positive constructive suggestions that the city might go, uh, and if the promise board might have some, you know, they're supposed to be advising us to be able to go and do that. You know, I don't know whether our community services, we could, we could ask our community services funding board to look to see whether there is a, 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 a counterbullying program that we might fund or that they might specifically seek proposals for, to be able to go and do that. But I think that, um, this is a significant enough community concern that, uh, you know, um, over the next month, we should exercise some leadership and, 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 and come up with a message, um, and, and maybe some idea about a way that we want to be a catalyst for, for something constructive to happen. Again, I'm, I, I don't, I don't got ideas to propose or things to, to do that, other than I'm passing on that I sense a need. And I think if we can discuss it at a future meeting or can come up with, with something that, that's a role for us to play. That, uh, you know, we, we, we don't run the schools, but on the other hand, we contribute and deal with a lot of the summer programs and other programs that, uh, that, that, that involve youth. Um, and there's, there, you know, there may be something there, there, there for us. I'd like to take a role. I just don't know what that role can be that I could anticipate making a positive impact. I need to look for it.
You're here, I agree.
Mr. Go to Mr., Mr. Simpson.
Um. Yeah, between the two roses and the two thorns on your sides. I have to agree with what Mary, Mike and Paul commented on. I, I heard about this a little differently. The mother of the young lady's best friend was very direct in what she had to say about what happened to her daughter's best friend. And Mike, I have an idea. Now, it's, it's out there, but I think I heard it discussed amongst us here. Maybe the city, if you wanna talk about taking leadership, maybe we should take leadership. Understand my drift? Because when that mother can tell me that she and the young lady's mother called this principal repeatedly and was, nothing was done, that points right at the board. And I, there, there's some other things I wanna say here too. There's a reason my children don't go to school in Lakewood, Washington. And god damn it, it starts with that school board. And it starts with the fact that this kind of nonsense goes on in our schools. And there's a good reason why they will not go to high school in Lakewood, Washington, because of this kind of nonsense that we, in a sense, allow. And so, I, I, I do appreciate it. I apologize if I get a little angry about this, but they are the future. I meet that future every morning at seven AM in my class. They are the future and this is what is happening. So, I'll, I'll be quiet on that point.
Both of his parents were there tonight and they told that story.
Yeah, yeah, I, Mary, I, I heard it. I mean, as close as I am to Mike, I mean, she was very direct. What else was I gonna say? Oh, on a brighter note, several, uh, study sessions ago, I mentioned something about the four, four, six AW, about how I'd been out on a flight with them and how we wanted to cement relationships a little better. They're on board. So, I will be sending, I guess, Bryn an email about how to link her, connect her up with their public affairs officer. They're willing to write something on a quarterly basis. If we can put it on the city's website, they want to get a little more of, uh, since we have a community connections program that's heavily weighted to the JBLM and sixty-second, the four, four, six would like to be a part of that too. So, I, I did talk to those people and they are definitely willing, and I think that, that only helps the city and the reserve component that serves here. Otherwise, I think it was a very good study session tonight. I really enjoyed learning about the storm water management.
Tax.
And I agree with the mayor. He and I were the only two that said tax. And I still think it's a tax. It's an indirect tax, but be that as it may. I thought it was a very good productive meeting, which speaks highly of this group.
Mr. Will. Well, your comments dovetail in mine on this whole bullying issue. It's, to me, having practiced law as done as for twenty-five years for me and longer for him, really is about a case for civility. We have got to raise the level of discourse in this country and it, it's gonna take a seat change. And it's gonna start not only with adults that'll be exhibiting and modeling behavior for kids, but hopefully the kids will learn from that. And it goes back to the issue, you know, I gotta, I gotta get a hell off.
Yeah, I know.
And I got a letter, uh, an email or whatever from administration that day. It was so cryptic. I hadn't written back. I didn't know what had gone on. I hadn't written back and say, what is this about? If you want me to, you know, console my child, what, what is going on? No response. Uh, you know, and so that, I guess, was fine. But, you know, be that as it may, I think there's lots we can talk about in terms of how we can stand up and be leaders in this kind of situation. But it takes, I think, some leadership by adults and not just the kids. Because you look at the social media crap that's out there, and whether it's this issue, or whether it's the panhandling signage, or whether it's the art in Washington, Gravy Lake. You know, there are examples that we can set for our children by being civil adults in discourse and teaching others how to have civil discourse. And I am one who doesn't put up with a lot of BS. And so, when someone says something stupid on Facebook and calling us greedy politicians for having the audacity to try to do something about the panhandling issue, I call them on it. And I tell them, your comments are out of line. And it's civil, but we have got to put people in their place. And that's the behavior, I think, that we can help exhibit if we're gonna do anything. I would love to see us eventually do some sort of symposium where we involve youth council and us, and we make an invite to the school board if they're so inclined to participate. If they do, great. If they don't, great, it's fine. But I, I, I agree with you. We can exhibit some leadership, at least get a conversation going. And another thing now is teach these kids that you can have a civil discourse about issues of significance that impact their lives without calling names or casting aspersions or pointing fingers. I think we can have a healthy conversation. If we start that, then you start to change the tone. It's only when you can change the tone that people have respect for one another in the classroom. You know, there's probably more to follow on the poor unfortunate Gabby situation, but I can tell you, um, you know, my sixth grader doesn't feel like she's had that issue at Hudlock. She's had a very good experience there. Um, she didn't really hear much about what had gone on, and until I tried to probe her about it, hey, did you hear? No. About this or whatever. So, anyway, more to follow on that. The bullying, I tell you, I see more adults bullying each other on that stupid Facebook, social media crap than the kids do. So, I think there's some change to be had.
So, I, I can tell you that you knew more than the school board did.
I'm sure.
The administration.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's just, it's just unfortunate.
And even after inquiry.
I was in just several briefing my Washington, Washington trip. I, uh, had a chance to enjoy a couple of days in DC with fifty of my closest friends from government and business throughout Tacoma County. And it was actually quite a good conference and we had, the, the format was different, where we went to the Senate Building, Dixon Building, Dirksen Building, and we had panel discussions on cybersecurity and JBLM, all sorts of other topics. But the, the high level thirty thousand foot stuff from the AUSA briefing and the other guys from the JBLM briefing is that there will be no BRAC. There is no budget that contains a BRAC. There is no focus on having a BRAC. It is not on the radar for now. Changes with the budget cycles, but it's not on the radar for now, which is a positive thing potentially for us, even though we were supportive of a BRAC if one were to happen. But apparently it's, it's not in the offing. Cybersecurity, the panel there was pretty interesting. They talked a lot about, um, there's gonna be a four star command for cybersecurity. It's gonna be stood up. JBLM will have a role to play in some of that, as well as other bases around the country. From an economic development standpoint, that potentially gives us some opportunity. Infoblox, which is a company in downtown Tacoma, it's out of Silicon Valley. They, uh, started an outpost here in Tacoma. Now they're over a hundred employees strong. And there's a good opportunity for growing cybersecurity and infrastructure networking in the South Sound. So, it's something that we can think about taking advantage of from a business recruitment and retention opportunity. I spoke a lot with Danny Heckling who's there. We talked, said to say hello to all of you. He was very bullish on all the things that the city of Lakewood is doing. And had a chance to chat with him. Pass your well wishes on to Jay Kim and, uh, Paul Kramer, who was at the panel discussion, both of which are. Chat a little bit about the whole base thing and, you know, what we're doing to help with Clear Zone and educated a lot of people in the room. And so, that was helpful deal. So. Good conference, more comments, but not a ten thirty.
Thank you. Yeah, the bullying issue is difficult. I, I think we need to carefully, uh, plot a course to be a leadership group. The context is different than the past. I came from a tough town where there was a lot of bullying, bloody noses, physical bullying. Junior high kids are mean, uh, especially girls. I had four girls. It's very sad. Guys punch each other and it's over.
Call every day.
The, uh, and schools are expected to be parents a lot more than they used to be, because the parents exhibit some of that bad behavior that you've seen on the social media, which is the new way that bullying follows kids home. Unfortunately, it seems to be that the, um, schools in general, not just Clover Park, but, uh, schools in general have allowed discipline to decline, uh, taking a, a hands-off, even-handed meeting. We, we don't do anything to anybody. We, we don't want to upset anybody by singling them out, uh, for a discipline or an adverse consequence. And let, and what would it be to someone who tries to defend themselves? And I'm, I'm, not because of the physical aspect of this, but I'm reminded of a, a kid who was one of my playmates beginning grade school named Billy Stamper. That came from one of the very few affluent families. So, he had a really neat basketball court at his house. He also has special needs. He was somewhere on the spectrum. We didn't know that. We just know that Billy wasn't right. But Billy was nice and, and my, one of my best friends, uh, kind of adopted Billy. We played basketball with him. We included him. Uh, he went away to a state home, uh, for a number of years and we were very disturbed when he left. Thing about Billy was, he couldn't be picked on, cause we were his bossy. And if somebody picked on Billy, they would've had to, they would've been, they would've got a short warning to back off, leave Billy alone. If they did anything else, we'd beat the crap out of them. Now, not so socially acceptable, as that might've been in a mill town in nineteen sixties. But I think we can, as leaders, one aspect of it is teaching the students to stand up and, and protect people who can't protect themselves. So, uh, and to make judgment decisions, to call people out. And to trust adults to back them up when they do. I think we can find a role that we need to.
Do we want to open a boxing club?
My dad had some boxing gloves, uh, gloves that he had when he was a youth.
Yeah.
And, uh, he got down on his knees and told me, I'll protect myself.
That's how my father did it with me too. He put up his fists and went Saturday afternoon and I learned the hard way. And nobody ever picked on me again.
There were comments made that.
Problem is, now, cause they can't hear.
There was comments made that.
Yeah, and that's, to be ridiculous.
If somebody hits, if somebody hits me on the street, I can cold cock them. There's no reprotection. You should be able to in the school.
Yeah.
I was just saying those comments made tonight that teachers are also bullying some kids.
Really? Well, that could, that could be trying to discipline.
I wanna, we, we need to be very, we need to be very careful in taking one side of the argument. And it's possible that if there is an issue there at Hudlock and then maybe there's an issue that the school district has a personnel issue that they need to deal with at a specific site. But we need to make, we don't want them to meddle. We don't want to meddle in their affairs. If we're not willing to have people meddle in ours, right, I mean, be careful. People in Glass House is throwing stones. That's all I'll say. Because we've got our flaws and we could have people say, you know what? You guys don't seem to be able to run your situation. Maybe I should do it, or maybe we should. I think about it as a symposium with the kids, though, from youth council, not to, not to cast any aspersions, but just to kind of get their perspective.
I, 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 I don't have that.
I, I, I think that I, while I hear what you're saying is, is that I'm not looking for our role to be meddling in their, their business to be able to go and do that. But I'm, I'm trying to have a forward-looking view and, and not gonna cede to the school board that they are the the agency that's responsible for young people in this community. I think there is a shared, and it isn't them and us, it's, it's, there, I think that we need to build a, a pretty large consensus of folks that are concerned about developing young people in, in, in the right way. You know, we, we talk about the promises, uh, in, in being able to go and do that. And, and sometimes the promises have, you know, provide opportunities for leadership and have a caring adult being able to do that. I think there's, there's, there's a missing, a missing component there about being a citizen at all the different levels that you're, that, that, that you are involved, you know, in, in, in your family, in your classroom. in your family, in your classroom, in, 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 in your, in your neighborhood, in, in, in your city, wherever you're, you're going. I hope we can come around on, on a way that we can be positive but not meddling, okay? Being, being focused on, 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 on making change in the community. You know, 'cause I, it's not our role to try to deal with the situation that happened. That, that, that's, you know, we don't have a role in that particularly.
I would just say, it was public comment, and there was cameras.
Say again?
Yeah.
That was public comment, and there was cameras.
Yeah, and, and I imagine there was a lot of finger pointing, okay, and, and, and things to do that. And then, and, you know, and we gotta get the discourse beyond that as to, as to saying, you know, here's how things get better that are going on in terms of the nature.
So, we need a executive session. Fifteen minutes to discuss lit, litigation, potential litigation. So we will. Pardon?
Litigation and potential litigation.
Again. So we will recess for fifteen minutes to discuss legal, or litigation and potential litigation with council for the city. Uh, we will return and take no further action, and that's our, we are a committee. Yeah, watch the last scene of, uh.
She's done a pubic nerve. Oh, yeah, totally. Look at this Facebook poster for her sister. Her sister, she was so lovely with this. Those were child social services. Right. Just, so. It's a. I regret that the parents, the parents have lost their child.